All right, you ready? All right, it is seven o'clock and we will call this meeting to order. Has this meeting been posted, Ms. Midsick?
Yes, it has.
And roll call will show that all five board members are present. And so I ask you to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so is there communication that you'd like to share, Ms. Midsick?
Yes, there is. Greendale Schools is seeking feedback from the community on the strategic priorities developed by the Strategic Planning Work Team during its sessions on April 30th and May 1st. A community survey was sent and opened through May 20th. The survey link was emailed to families, staff, students in grades six through 12, Community Notebook e-newsletter subscribers, and the district's community leaders list. In addition, a postcard was sent to every Greendale resident asking for input. The survey link is found on the district website, News and Announcements page. Paper copies of the survey are available at the Park and Rec offices in the Community Learning Center. The Pfizer Biotech COVID-19 vaccine approved for emergency use authorization from the FDA and the CDC provided guidance allowing the vaccine to be administered to individuals ages 12 to 15. With this new recommendation, we are working with the Greendale Health Department and Hyatt Pharmacy in offering a student vaccine clinic on May 18th and May 19th. Parents have registered students for the clinic, and we are grateful to the Greendale Health Department for their hard work in coordinating this effort. I received communication from six parents and one community member requesting changes to the mask requirement for students in schools. The safety team continues to work with the Greendale Health Department to interpret the changing guidelines from the Centers for Disease Control. During the Update on Learning Plans report this evening, administration will engage the board in a conversation about our ongoing safety measures in our schools. I received communication from two parents asking about high school schedules for the 2021 school year. Schedules are not yet determined for next school year. There are several factors impacting a potential schedule change. Again, administration will consult the board as part of the Update on Learning Plans. Greendale High School will hold prom this Friday, May 21st, at Western Lakes Country Club. The evening will include dinner and dancing. Masks will be required at this time. Dancing will be outdoors and students will be co-horted for the events of the evening. Promgoers will also model their attire at a grand march. Participants will be allowed two spectators in the gym, and the event will be livestreamed on the district's YouTube channel for the community. I have submitted my dissertation titled "The Role of Equity in School Improvement Science" to a committee of five professors. I will defend my research the week of May 24th. Upon committee approval, I will earn my PhD and the title of doctor. Last weekend, I participated in the University of Wisconsin graduation ceremony at Camp Randall as a doctoral candidate. Greendale High School choirs and orchestra will represent the state of Wisconsin in Washington DC in the spring of 2022 as part of a performance tour. Both Greendale High School robotics teams had a fantastic end to their rookie seasons at the first Tech Challenge State Tournament. Team Graffiti finished in fifth place in robot matches. Graffiti won second place overall, the Inspire Award, which would have qualified them for the World Championship if not for COVID cancellations. They also won second place Connect and third place Think Awards. Megan Vulcanin was selected as one of Wisconsin's three first tech challenge Dean's List finalists and will advance to the national selection level. To honor Mental Health Awareness Month in May, fifth grade students created an interactive bulletin board highlighting fun mindfulness activities. Students in all grades are able to view the board and select different strategies to promote ways to become more mindful. Activities include yoga poses, deep breathing, coloring, desk sketches, and journaling. Desk stretches, sorry. May is Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and students in Greendale Schools are enriching their understanding of the cultures of their peers by learning from each other and special guest speakers. Recently, College Park students learned about Thailand and its customs and cultures from Mrs. Yang and Mr. Bob, who shared about his family background from the Philippines. Summer school registration is in progress until May 21st at Greendale High School, in-person learning and/or a combination of in-person and virtual learning. Safety protocols will be in place for the current school year. Additional information can be found on the district's website. Students in grades K through eight will have classes from June 21st through July 23rd. Grades K through three will be held at Canterbury School, and classes for grades four through eight will be held at Greendale Middle School. All students will be off the week of July 5th. The following donations were received by the district. $100 from Mr. Raymond Kem of Greendale in honor of Tommy Young to the Theater Department. $60.84 to the Theater Department from Digital Theater LLC, show tickets for you. And $250 from Jason Dummett to the Greendale High School Garden to support the tree and sustainability project. And finally, I wanted to end communications tonight with a brief video featuring the Greendale Middle School and Greendale High School students. All year long, our Greendale Choir teachers have been determined to find ways for students to connect with one another, and in this case, singing together together. Well, we've had two in-person concert opportunities for individual choirs. This was the first opportunity for our students at the middle school and high school to come together. If you're looking for more music, the High School Choir Concert will be livestreamed Monday, May 24th at 7:00 PM. And that concludes my communications.
All right, and I'd be remiss if I didn't congratulate you, Dr. Midsick. Congratulations on a lot of hard work, and I think our community is very grateful for your work, so congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, I welcome anyone who would like to share some comments. And please note that we welcome all those who will be speaking this evening. We would like to remind you that the school board meetings are for the purpose of carrying on the business of the district, and they are official meetings that are held in public. Through School Board Policy 186, the board allows citizens to make comments by scheduling two opportunities on the agenda to receive citizen comments. In accordance with the intent of the opening meeting laws, please be aware that although the Board of Education welcomes these comments from the public, it cannot discuss or debate items brought up during public comments unless already on the agenda. And in order to hear from all citizens who wish to speak and to ensure that the official business of the district is addressed, Board Policy sets a time limit for citizen comments, and we'll be adhering to those time limits at tonight's meeting. Persons wishing to address the board are asked to come to the podium and the microphone, state their name and address for the record, and comments are limited to one time. Individuals who will be speaking are limited to three minutes. Citizen comments are limited to a period not to exceed 30 minutes. Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you, good evening. My name is Alan Diggan, and I live in Greendale on Oldwood Lane. I'm a proud graduate of Greendale High School. I rise today to again warn of continuing social justice warfare that affects our schools to the detriment of the nation. An age-old adage is that fish don't know when they are wet. In the face of society, we often don't realize that we carry code words and phrases of a self-serving racial justice industry. These words and phrases, when called out, become evident. We suddenly notice how wet we have become. Words and phrases such as equity, diversity, inclusiveness, people of color signal you are being subjected to racial social justice group thing. What they also signal is that the policies or plans in which they exist could be divisive and racist. By racist, I mean that we are identified by the color of our skin, not by the content of our character. Consider how often these pet phrases appear in recent strategic surveys, new teacher projects, committees, and counting expulsions by racial categories. Fortunately, the good news is Greendale so far has managed to avoid the toxic critical race theory quagmire that is dividing our country. Parents and state legislatures around the nation are rising up against this indoctrination. In so many cases, critical race theory was preceded by people of good conscience that dipped their toes into the equity racial justice waters. They became fish, not realizing how wet they were and that they could drown. So keep your heads above water and beware the code words that lead to injustice and division. Thank you.
Thank you this evening. Good evening, Mr. Sabrowski. I think we're going to try to make sure it doesn't sound like it's working, but I think we can hear you. Yes, please.
A few items today. One would be a source for our time for last year. I don't have any kids there in the school, but I am definitely against this. Pretty much, I feel moving in the school. I haven't been funding a 800. Something I do against, and also hearing from a lot of our parents that they're not for it. Our next topic would be the school surveys that are set out. I would ask that... I feel that a lot of questions are kind of almost asked the same thing, but in different ways.
On the bush almost. And almost would ask that they be more transparent and more to the point instead of asking a question, but really not necessarily asking the question. So I'm not sure who comes up with those, but I would ask that you really work with your team on that. Make it more simplified, I guess, and just make it easier for the normal person to be able to understand and read. The last thing, the most important thing. I come to ask to let the kids not have to wear masks anymore. I know we're here, please, I want to hold disruptions down. I want to make sure that people have a chance to speak. In the last three weeks, this is from our own Greendale Health Department. Last week, we had three COVID cases. The week before was 10. The week before that was seven. It's obviously extremely down and to a point where we need to reconsider this. I did talk to one of the school board members today, and my original ask might be unrealistic, even though there's 67 schools or districts that have done this already, that are mask, are optional at this point. And they've done this the last week or two. I'm not necessarily going to ask of that, of you today, because it might be a lot to do with school for two weeks. But I am going to ask that for summer school and then for next year. It just needs to get ended now. It's not okay anymore. I'm going to just read a couple of facts to you guys, and I'm sure you guys know a lot of the stuff already, but 71% of Greendale has already been vaccinated. 89% of those are seniors. So majority of our community has already been vaccinated. So anybody that was worried about COVID or had concerns about COVID, they have a vaccination. And honestly, you can go anywhere and get it. You go to Pick and Save, Walgreens, like literally anywhere and get that. Am I up? Could I have like another 20 seconds possibly?
We did interrupt you, so I'll let you finish your thought then.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate that. COVID cases from November obviously were way higher than what they are now. Once they put the mask mandate, that mask was supposed to help the cases come down. It really hasn't, if you really look at all the facts. What really has helped all this come down with the COVID is the vaccine, which everybody that has had the vaccine or can get it has had that chance too. So I have quite a bit more, but I will stop so I can let other people talk.
President Capito, could we take a vote on letting Mr. Sabrowski finish?
We have a policy that speaks to it, so I'm not going to...
Given the fact that he has four children in the district?
As do I, so we're going to continue, but thank you, Jason.
I'll let others talk, because we only have 30 minutes too, so. Thank you, guys, I really appreciate it.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mary. Congratulations on your win, Joe, you too. Kim Kowalczek, 6200 Highland Lane, apartment number three, Greendale, Wisconsin. I'm going to elaborate on Jason here. I too feel that the mask mandate needs to end. Most of the people here have been vaccinated. Waukesha just did the other day, a week ago, I believe, that the mask is optional. I work in the healthcare profession. Our numbers are down where I am at. The numbers continue to go down. I don't think masks need to be worn during summer school. My child has hay fever and allergies during the summer, and it is hard for him to breathe in the mask. I have had him text me while I'm at work, and him saying, "Mom, I can't breathe in this mask." And if I have to sneeze, the teachers get mad if I have to take my mask down to sneeze. I don't think it's fair. These kids are getting sicker. My kid had to quarantine for 10 days because he thought he had strep throat. I took him to the doctor, we got a rapid strep test. He had a COVID test, both things came back negative. The doctor made us quarantine him for 10 days. My child is also part of the 504 program. I believe that this district has failed the kids who are in, who have IEPs. My kid had to leave eighth grade last year with a bad taste in his mouth because he had to pass fail. He had to pass fail his first semester of his freshman year in high school. He's a high school student, he's in band. The kid is, he's very intelligent, he's very smart. But when you close down the schools for a sniffle, okay? I don't think it's fair. I don't think it's fair to any of the parents here. They need to go to school five days a week. They can't be, you know, we were given the option at the beginning of the year, hybrid, all, virtual, and it doesn't work. It doesn't work for some of the kids, especially the kids who have IEPs. They can't learn online. My son learns better when he is in school. So this district, I hope to God, because now my kid has to go, my son has to go to summer school to do credit recovery so that he can pass ninth grade. I don't think it's fair. This district has failed our kids. And as a parent of a child, I moved to this district 10 years ago because of this district, because of it being a very good district. And I'm sorry, I'm going, for what I'm about to say, but I will be damned if I'm going to let this school board be run by the fact that because you feel that you have... The CDC guidelines, we don't have a mask mandate here anymore. Teachers need to start caring about these kids. I work a full-time job. I'm a full-time employee. I work part-time at Cydex. My husband works full-time. I have to come home and try to teach him things that I can't, I'm so tired at the end of the day because I did not go to school to become a teacher. So I need this district to start healing these people who have kids who are in IEPs, who have 504s, who are struggling, these kids are struggling, and they can't learn online. It's not conducive to my child's learning. So I hope and pray to God that you don't have masks next year, that it should be optional. I don't know what else to say, except for the fact that if you're not sick, then you should be able to, for the parental, and the attendance policy needs to be changed for that. I believe fully that the attendance policy needs to be changed for that. If I'm calling my kid in, I shouldn't be getting a letter in the mail because he's been sick for four, or five, or six, or seven days. That needs to change. I call my kid in.
Thank you.
I'm Joanne Albow, Greendale, Maplewood Drive, Greendale. I am against any critical race teaching in schools. It is socialism, plain and simple. I am against the wearing of masks, breathing your own carbon monoxide, and bacteria every minute is not healthy, as we all know. I am against the COVID shot. It is not a vaccine, and it is not approved by the FDA. Public schools have become training camps for brainwashing and liberal government indoctrination, no matter what degrees you have. I do not support diversity training of any kind. It promotes separatism and offends me as a person of mixed minority ancestry. I support school choice as an American freedom. The average GPA is a shame for most public schools. Remember who you're working for and whose tax money you're spending. On your note here, you say your meetings build transparency and trust. The next paragraph, it says, "Keep closed meeting discussion confidential respectfully."
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Elizabeth. I live on 6119 Downing Street. I've been emailing you guys all week. I sent you 16 articles, kind of piggybacking off what everyone else is saying. Children pose little to no risk of getting sick or dying from COVID. They're more likely to die in a car accident. Should we no longer bus our students? We deserve to make the medical decisions best for our families, not the CDC, not the district. We should have a choice. Let us sign a waiver, whatever, let's get the masks off the kids. When will they come out, when will they come off? At what measuring point will you do this? You keep trying to say to protect the kids and staff. I don't accept that anymore. We need to hold our district accountable and get back to life. If you can sit down at a restaurant without a mask on, why can't our children sit in their seats without a mask on? We don't know the damage that robbing children of seeing the faces of their peers will cause, but we do know prolonged masking causes anxiety, hypoxia, increased heart rate, acne, fungal infections. And then, on a more personal note, last week, my son had an injury at school on the playground. He hurt his face, his lips split open, his, he has damage to his permanent tooth. He will most likely need a rook now. And I asked him why he didn't say anything to his teacher. I didn't want to worry her. Now, I don't blame his teacher for not realizing he was in pain because she's not trained to interpret body language through a face covering. What else are these teachers missing, though? Had the mask been eliminated, she would have recognized the pain. She would have seen the blood and immediately called someone to address and clean it. Is this, this is backed by, he, sorry. Not to mention the blood-borne pathogens he could have, he could have spread from his mask. That's more at risk than a seven-year-old giving someone COVID. Why aren't we allowing kids to take a break from masks outside? I was told they don't have to wear them outside, and this carries, he was wearing a mask in the fresh air. Why does an adult's fear someone who is more than welcome to double mask if they believe in two barriers, someone who has access to a vaccine to protect themselves, mean that my kid has to suffer for a half a day in pain, bleeding, traumatized, now at risk of losing a permanent tooth? My child believed his mask provided him a protective barrier because that is what has been shoved down his throat all year. Maybe he didn't speak up because masks put people in a position of submission, and for a child who already has trouble advocating for himself, why wasn't a district employee that saw him hit his head advocate for him and ask to check his mouth? What is your protocol addressing and monitoring the whole child, including parts of their face covered by a mask, which is arguably the most important part of our kids, that's their airway? What if he bit his tongue? What if he knocked out his tooth? What if he choked on something? Should I send the district my child's dental bill? When will this stop? Summer school is around the corner, they've made masks mandatory without any parental consent. What is going to happen when a child faints from dehydration or heat exhaustion because they are forced to cover their airways? What you are doing is not in the best interest of our children. Then on 4/26, there was a motion to have in-person summer school with the current safety protocol in place. Was this, was there a vote on this? Why didn't elementary families get surveys on the current protocols? The current protocols are outdated. Every single district in the state is reviewing this. Many have opted to make masking a personal choice. I sure hope your plan isn't to keep the young kids who pose little to no risk of getting sick from COVID in their masks since they are ineligible for a vaccine and think parents won't notice your agenda. Why is it even anyone's business what decisions our families make and for our children? Personal health information should be protected, it should be confidential. Your teachers and all adults are eligible, and they can get vaccinated. I'm asking you to allow parents to choose the health interventions that best fit their child's needs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Danielle Vorkovich, 5684 Gladstone Lane. I recently learned that the Greendale High School is considering a schedule change for 2122, Proposal 5.4, adding a mandatory resource period for all students. Instead of starting first hour at 7:50 like they have for over eight years, all students would start first hour at 7:15, an ungodly hour, and the resource period would be moved toward later in the day. I was going to give you history of the resource period, but I'm assuming all of you know this. I communicated these to concerns to the superintendent. She tried to tell me that school always started at 7:15. Not completely true. For the past eight years, not including this current odd pandemic year, the majority of students started at 7:50. 7:15 was for resource. Freshmen had to do it for the first quarter, and then kids who had Ds or Fs had to do it in order to bring their grades up for the next quarter after those grades. It made sense. Kids could go if they needed help. Kids who needed the help had to go. It was a great system. So now I'm being told they're going to change this. The superintendent also told me that because of the atypical schedule this year, the school didn't meet the required hours. Yeah, most school districts didn't in this weird year. And the resource period wasn't in place, and that's why they didn't do it. She told me that they shortened the day, and now that they needed to, you know, reevaluate the resource period. Why? What are we reevaluating the resource period for? Is it for more SEL instruction? The most recent parent survey, the one that's going to be used for you guys to vote on this proposal, actually addresses this, but in such a deceptive and skewed question way that the results need to be tossed out. It's a paragraph-long question. The second last part of it says, each student would be assigned a dedicated advisor for their SEL and ACP. Time will be available for independent study, blah, blah, blah. This time would replace the previous time for the resource period. Would you support a dedicated time to support these things for students? Not only is the question too long, it's unclear and misleading. Nowhere in that question do you come out and say to parents, "Are you okay with the school day beginning for everybody at 7:15?" Instead, it asks parents if they want more supports, which everybody's going to answer yes to. Parents who answered this question may not have realized that they answered yes to starting school for everybody at 7:15 so you can move a resource period into a later period in the day that everybody has to go to, where you have mandated social emotional learning presentations. While I strongly believe the desire to help kids is real and proper, why do all kids have to sit through mandated SEL presentations if they all don't need it? SEL curriculum should be designed and delivered not with a one-size-fits-all approach. Perhaps the district should invest more in counselors, social workers, therapists, who could actually work one-on-one with students who need it. Most teenagers aren't going to share their deepest emotions, traumas, with teachers, sometimes not even in a small group. Real therapy and mental health assistance occurs in individual meetings, not in large classrooms. Those of us who actually teach teenagers, like myself in a local high school, like we're in the classrooms every day with them, know that most of their personal and emotional conversations happen with their friends, their siblings, and their parents outside of the classroom. Schools should not force-feed SEL programming, as it's being called. Schools should not force-feed SEL programming, as it's being called, on these teenagers, and then starting the day earlier to do it. Next million-dollar question I have is, what is the curriculum that you're using in the required SEL classes? Will parents have access to that curriculum? Will they be able to see it and approve it before it's presented to their kids? They should be. Schools get in really sticky situations when they start thinking they can educate students morally, socially, and emotionally better than the parents. If you don't think the parents are doing their jobs, you can offer supports for the kids and offer supports to the parents who want them, but you should never impose it on people who don't. That is not choice. Please, please, please negate the most recent survey results. Send out a survey with questions that are transparent, specific, and direct in regards to what you really want to change and modify. Parents have a right to know what they're saying yes to, and so do students. Why weren't they asked? If you really care about their mental health, you'd ask them the question, are you willing to come 30 minutes earlier every day to sit through a 30-minute SEL ACP class period? Parents should be asked the same question.
Ms. Vorkovich, if you could finish up your comments.
I'm wrapping it up.
Thank you.
Asking high school kids to get up earlier to fit mandatory SEL does not have their mental health as a priority. The CDC even supports teenagers need extra sleep more than younger children. You ask any teen you know if they want to get up earlier to sit in a class that's going to talk to them about their emotional and social learning? My guess is many would say no, and it'd be the same for English or math. I want to go to school earlier? Said no teenager ever. An earlier start time disrupts the reality of a student's sleep schedule, not to mention what's going to happen to the extracurriculars that take place before school? Swim, band, choir, all that stuff. Kids are going to come earlier for that, not for more instructional time. If you really think about it, true and authentic SEL instruction starts in the home, and it's the primary job of parents and guardians. It's not the job of a school to assume it isn't being taught at home or that it isn't being taught the right, right way.
Thank you.
Redo your survey with the right questions. Be transparent.
Thank you.
President Capito, since she was speaking about an agenda item, anyone speaking about agenda, are they allowed more time?
No.
Could we take a vote on that?
No, there's a policy.
Our policy allows for that.
Yeah, you have to stay with policy.
Since it was an agenda item, I thought it might be in a different category.
Oh, thank, good evening.
Hi, I'm Michelle Persick. I live at 6095 Thornapple Drive. There was a survey in the Weekly from the high school on Friday, May 7th, about the reopening next year. Originally, the choices were fully virtual, chosen by 5% of families, and in-person, five days a week, which was chosen by 95% of families. This new survey was for families like mine, who chose five days a week to gauge our comfort level in having regular virtual days sprinkled into the schedule, either once per month, once every other week, or once every week. The fact that a four-day-a-week school week was even on the table was disappointing. I'm truly grateful for the way that Greendale handled COVID this year and the fact that our kids were lucky enough to be in the building four days a week this year. That was a tremendous privilege given the situation. But why would we repeat this next year? Our kids need to be in school five days a week. Mental health disorders in children and teens have quadrupled over the past year, largely in part to the isolation of virtual learning, the inequities that exist in virtual learning, and the frustration with the technology itself. If we know something is bad for the mental health of our kids, why would we propose that we do it sometimes? That would be like telling kids, smoking is bad for you, but doing it once a week, or once every two weeks, or once a month won't hurt you. And sure, there are plenty of kids who could handle that regular virtual day, but what about the ones who have developed depression or anxiety over it? Are we really okay with calling these kids collateral damage? I am not okay with that. The survey seems to have only been sent to parents of students who will be in 7th grade and older next year. One could argue that these kids are old enough to stay home and learn virtually independently. But what about the students that age with special needs? Can they really be expected to sit at a computer for up to 20% of their week without an adult at home to support them? Then there are the kids who don't qualify for a special education, but school is just hard for them anyway. What about the kids with ADHD, or the ones with a 504 plan? Is this fair to them? Then there are the kids who don't have any problem learning and just don't feel like turning on their cameras or participating in class discussions. Honestly, there are just some kids who are not going to do the work unless the teacher is there standing over them. Are we really okay with these kids not engaging like they should be, even once a week or once every other week? Is this equitable for families or for children with a single parent? Or with two working parents, since they don't have the option or the privilege of choosing to support their child's online learning during the school day? I know a family who has to pay someone to come to their house while both parents are at work so that their child can access learning because the child cannot do it on her own. Is that fair for the family to endure the hardship of that extra expense? Maybe it was a necessary evil this year during COVID and the unprecedented circumstances that came with it, but I don't believe that there is a way to justify a four-day-a-week school week next year. Please let our kids learn in the building every day, five days a week next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi. Hi. Hi, my name is Sky Persick at 6095 Thornapple Drive. I have never in my life enjoyed virtual. One reason is that you can get disconnected. When this happens, I fall a little bit behind because sometimes people can't tell that I've been disconnected. Another reason is that it is harder if you need help because the teacher is, if the teacher is already helping someone, you can't form a line, and sooner or later, it gets confusing. I just want to say that I have one of the best teachers in the Greendale district. She has always tried to help me. I also want to say that virtual is different. For me, it isn't, it's in a negative way. So, so please let students go completely in-person, even if that means wearing masks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments. You, you did a very nice job. Good evening.
Jodyen Shook, 5050 Story Lane. I'm here tonight to express my concern on two issues. First being the survey that was sent to students of high school, middle school, last week, which was buried in the principal's weekly for parents. And the second is being masks, but I think I'm going to let others speak on that since you've already heard a little bit about that. I am very disappointed in this, in this district for surveying students, minors, asking them how many virtual days they are interested in having next year. Since when do we ask minors what they prefer in their educational decisions? A quote directly from the survey says, 95% of parents voted to have their kids in school five days a week. Well, in a district of approximately 2,682 students, I know that's a rough number, that is 2,548 people who, parents of people who want their kids in school five days a week. 5% that did not choose five days a week is roughly 134 kids. Why are we asking, why are you asking us yet again how many days we want our kids in school? I think we have spoken. The answer is clearly, or, I'm sorry, how many days we want our kids virtual? The answer is clearly zero. 95% of parents have said we want our kids in school five days a week. And more on a personal note, my 7th-grade daughter, on her virtual Wednesdays, she's had at least half a dozen Wednesdays where she's had to get up to get in for attendance. She's had no Google meets, no classwork, nothing to do, an entire day. So basically, it was another day off for her. It's not a virtual day. That's a day off. I also want to address the early start time for next year. My high school student has a job. She goes to school. She has a job. Then she has to come home after her job and do homework. Sometimes she's up till 10, 11 o'clock at night doing homework. She can't get up any earlier than she already does to come to school. Please consider not having an early start time. I piggyback on, we don't need to have a forced SEL curriculum for kids who don't need it. And it's not going to be addressed as a one-size-fits-all. So please consider these two things. We want our kids in school five days a week. No 7:15 start time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Kendra Persick. I live at 6095 Thornapple Drive, and I'm a student at the high school. I will be talking about my thoughts on virtual school next year. And just to be clear, I would love to go five days a week in school, in person. But if we can't do that, then these are, this is my opinion. First, let me say that I am totally against virtual school in all next year because of all the stress I've seen, felt, and sometimes still think about. Next year, I don't agree with having a day in every week be, being fully virtual. What you are seeing isn't even close to what we feel at home, alone in our rooms, at our screen, tearing up because the screen hurts our eyes, or everyone is going too fast or too slow, et cetera. Second, I personally am okay with having half a day once a week virtual, like we are doing now. It's less stress than a full virtual day. And then if we haven't finished something, we still have the second half of the day to finish up asynchronously. Or with a friend that will actually work with us, unlike those awkward breakout rooms, while, where everyone has their cameras off and mics muted. Seriously, not once, but multiple times, I've asked a question or asked who, asked who wants to do what, and nobody has answered me. Only once in a blue moon will I get a group that will actually work as a group. Another reason we shouldn't have a fully virtual day every week is because, again, it's a lot of stress. Stress is good, but not when you're stressed all day. It's especially hard if your parents are at work and you have a younger sibling who needs help all day, your stress and their stress. Of course, I still agree that if families still need the all-virtual option, they should have that option. I just know it isn't a good idea to make everyone go virtual for even one day each week. It's just too difficult for so many people. Trust me, because I am a student. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. You did a very nice job, so thank you for sharing your comments. Good evening.
Hello, I'm Brittany Robb. I'm located at 7062 Darnell Lane. I have two kids in the district right now, and we actually, I'm probably an enigma here, but we actually started the school year virtual. We were concerned, you know, we weren't totally sure. There wasn't a whole lot of answers out there for us. And being a family that owns a small business, we thought that was the best option for our family. We wanted to be virtual. We just wanted to make sure that our business could stay afloat, that we weren't bringing anything into our business because we were still running. That didn't last very long. It, it didn't work out. Sarah Derrick was incredible and very diplomatic and helped us get back in, in-person learning environment, which was absolutely phenomenal. But now, I guess, what I'd like to address is the masks. Our, my four-year-old is absolutely terrified now of taking her mask off because she is constantly conditioned, pull it up, pull it up, make sure you have your mask up. And now, we go to see family, and she puts this mask on, she cries, she doesn't want to take it off. And quite frankly, I'm really concerned about what it's going to be like next year when she goes into a full day of kindergarten, and she has to have this covering on her face, and she's going to just kind of close off and become this shell. And that's, that's very scary for me because I'm very social, I'm very out there, I'm very open, and to see my child kind of just close off from the world is, it's concerning, especially for a four-year-old. Then, my first grader is in-person, full day, and I just, honestly, so many of these parents that do have their children full day right now, they're having playdates, they are still doing tons of sports, and our family business is Altius Gymnastics in Franklin. So our kids are there, and we're actually dropping our mask mandate there as well. So we feel that enough of our staff is vaccinated at this point, and we're given the opportunity to be vaccinated, and the children aren't spreading it there. I mean, the, the facts are out there, and now that we have more information, we're able to do that, and we're able to offer that to, to the people in, in our business. And we have 1,300 kids currently enrolled at Altius Gymnastics. And our numbers have dropped off as well, and we actually do track it just to, to kind of have an idea so that we can, you know, well, if this class has one, you know, positive case, we want to make sure that we inform those families and let them know. So we have been doing our best to be socially responsible here as well. But we're, we're just at the point now that we need to remove the masks, and I'm not asking for you to do it this school year. Let's finish the school year. That's fine. The kids are used to it at this point. But please, 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 let's drop this for summer school and do not require it for the next school year. I mean, we need to find a way to get out of this constant holding pattern. Like, no one wants to step out and say anything. Everyone is so fearful of, you know, some kind of, you know, I'm, I'm fearful in coming forward and being like, hey, we're, we're ready. We're ready to, to start taking this away because someone might call you, you know, you don't believe in science, you don't do this. Well, my bachelor's degree is in science, and actually, in epidemiology as well. So it's time.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Capito, you have reached 30 minutes for public comment.
All right, I'll let, Mr. McFaul will be the last speaker.
Oh, President Capito, could we take a vote on it, since there's so many people that came here to speak?
You know, again, this is policy, Ms. Grogan, where we set the policy, and I think I mentioned it at the beginning of the, the speech. So Robbie, I'd like to...
I'll be quick, Mary.
No, I'm thinking about all the other people who haven't had comments.
Mine is totally different. So I, I just want to let you know, I see that we're going to, that on one of the items here is proving the naming of the Greendale Middle School gymnasium for Mr. Bergner. I urge you guys, and I hopefully you'll vote yes on this. He's a wonderful, he was a wonderful teacher, a wonderful man, a mentor to a lot of people in this village, and again, I can't say enough about this man. And I hope you, again, I hope you guys vote yes on this matter and get this done for the family, the Bergner family. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Robbie.
Could I make a motion that we suspend that rule and let the...
That's the policy.
We're not posted.
We're not posted to, to change that policy tonight. I, I will say, thank you for coming out this evening. Thank you for sharing your candid feedback, your comments. This is why Greendale schools, and this is why the community is so great, is because people really care about what's happening within the community, what's happening within our schools. So I, I think, you know, we, we heard the passion. We, we heard the concern for students. So thank you for coming out this evening. We will be discussing the reopening plans. We've had conversations about reopening a couple of times this year. There were a few comments or questions about virtual. Some of that was in response to some of the comments and feedback that we had received earlier. You know, that doesn't negate some of the earlier conversation. That doesn't negate some of the earlier discussion that we've had about going back in person in, in the fall. You know, that, that is the desire. Things are changing rapidly. I mean, I think we're all aware of the CDC making some changes just last week. Some of that's still being digested, some of that's still being understood to say, okay, how does that impact schools? What does that mean for students that aren't eligible for vaccines? But we will be talking about the reopening plans later in this evening. Some of the conversations about the earlier start times, I think we've gotten off track a little bit, and, and we'll probably talk about that a little bit. But not everything that was discussed or brought up is accurate information. But we'll talk about that later as well.
President, I'm sorry to interrupt you again, President, but I just wanted to let anyone here who still wanted to speak that additional comments and/or questions from visitors are allowed at the end of the meeting as well. So if anyone wanted to come back, or, you know, watch at home and then come back. And those comments are limited to five minutes, thanks to a typo on the agenda.
All right. All right, thanks. Then we will continue with, next up on our agenda is the approval of the regular meeting minutes. So is there a motion to approve the last meeting minute of May 3rd?
I move to approve the regular meeting minutes of May 3rd as outlined in Agenda Item 1.
I second.
There's been a motion, a second, to approve the regular meeting minutes. Any further discussion? Look for a roll-call vote?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
And I am a yes motion carries. Continuing, actual reports for checks and dispersals. Jonathan, anything that you'd like to share?
Included in the updated information, revenues through the end of April 2021 of 60.17%. That compared with the prior year of 61.32%. On the expenditure side, we were at budgeted expenditures of 62.31. That compares with 60.83% in the prior year. We also identified an update regarding federal stimulus money. At the SIR 1, federal stimulus funding, we were at 95% of that allocation being spent or committed at this point. And for SIR 2, we were at 29%, or $319,000 spent or committed at this point. We're still waiting for the final allocation for the third round of federal stimulus, but we still anticipate that to be at or slightly above $2 million for our COVID response plan.
All right, any other questions? Otherwise, I'm looking for a motion to approve this month's checks and dispersments.
I just had a question regarding SIR 3. Is there a deadline by which those funds have to be spent? Is that able to go into next year?
Yes, it even will extend beyond that. Yes, we will have it for next year.
I think it's, was it 2022 for S, for the first round, 2023 for the second, and 2024 for the third? I think is the, if I recall correctly.
Yes, SIR 3 will go all the way until September 30th of 2024. That'll be the last day to commit those dollars.
Thank you.
All right, then is there a motion?
I motion to approve checks and dispersments in the amount of $2,079, 79,650... Let me try that again. $2,079,656.62 is outlined in Agenda Item 2.2.
I second.
There's been a motion, a second, to approve checks and... There's been a motion, a second, to approve checks and dispersments as outlined in Agenda Item two point two, any further discussion? Can I call for a roll call vote?
Yes, yes.
Yes?
Yes.
And I am yes, motion carries. Continuing on, Agenda Item four point one, personnel, we have approval of a teacher appointment and an approval of the, uh, school psychologist resignation. Anything more from administration? Any questions, otherwise I'm looking for a motion to approve personnel.
Motion to approve Personnel Action, approve teacher appointment and accept, uh, school psychologist resignation request as outlined in Agenda Item four point one.
I second.
There's been a motion, a second, to approve personnel, any further discussion? Can I call for a roll call vote?
Yes, yes.
Yes?
Yes.
And I am yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda, so we heard about this last meeting, and you heard Mr. McFaul, uh, talk about naming of the Greendale Middle School Gymnasium um, after a former teacher. Uh, so we just, we, this was presented, um, an ad hoc committee did review this request and made the recommendation based on our policy to move forward with this naming. So any, any additional comments from the administration, or any questions from the board?
No, we recommend approval.
All right, so then I'm looking for a motion to approve, um, the Greendale Middle School Gymnasium after former teacher and coach, Mr. Richard Bergner.
I move to approve the naming of the Greendale Middle School Gymnasium to Richard J., is it? Bergner, Mr. Bergner, um, as, uh, outlined in Agenda Item four point two.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second, to approve the Greendale Middle School Gymnasium after former teacher and coach, Mr. Richard Bergner, any further discussion? Can I call for a roll call vote?
A resounding yes.
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 And I am yes, motion carries. Congratulations to, uh, to the Bergner family.
I will work with the Bergner family on, um, a ceremony unveiling the new name.
Excellent. Um, all right, next item on the agenda, this is an annual approval, this is approval of the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two CISA one contract. So Greendale is a school district within the CISA one, and CISA is, um-
Cooperative Educational Services Agency of the state is divided into twelve Cisas.
So Greendale participates in the CISA, gets some services from it, and then we contract with CISA one for some very specific, um, special education services based on student need. So typically, those are for roles where we, uh, we don't have either the capacity, or we don't have the number of students involved with those levels of support, uh, so we contract with CISA to provide those.
Yes, it's a, CISA is intended to increase efficiency of our tax dollars so that we can maximize impact and minimize cost.
Yeah, I move to approve Action Item four point three, approving the twenty-one, twenty-two CISA one contract.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second, to approve the CISA one contract, any further discussion? Can I call for a roll call vote?
Yes, yes.
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 And I am yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is motion to approve a student field trip to Germany. So, um, again, based on board policy, any field trips that are outside of the country um, require coming to the board for approval, and we all receive this as part of our package then. Um, and these field trips are, the costs are borne by the families, so this is not a, a district expense, these are all borne by the families. Um, so any discussion, I see Mr. Lotus is back there, but any questions? Uh, I believe this is a field trip that has taken place every couple of years. Uh, I, I know with the last, you know, with the pandemic, the past year and a half, there's been some changes, but this is scheduled to run again then.
I just had a question regarding, it looks like we're extending this potentially to Greenfield students, is that correct?
Yes, that we would, sorry, he doesn't have a microphone.
Oh, okay.
Um, we would, um, extend it to Greenfield if we do not have sufficient numbers to run the trip.
So my question just comes down to, like, uh, student handbook and so forth, do the students of Greenfield have to sign on that they're following the Greenfield, Greendale, um, handbook, or how, how does that work?
There would be, uh, guidelines within the field trip approval, and they would be accountable to their school district, and but in terms of the permission slip, there would be a set of, um, requirements that the student would follow within the permission slip, and that would follow our, our permission slip resources. You are posted to take action on this, but we did not bring this forward two weeks in advance, so you could choose to take action on it tonight, or if you needed more time to consider it, you could table it.
I guess from my perspective, this is a, this is not a new field trip.
Yes, and I don't know if you also saw that this would be summer school credit and a language immersion experience, so.
So I'm okay to move forward if there's a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve, uh, Action Item four point four, approving the student field trip to Germany.
I'll second.
There's been a motion, a second, to approve, uh, Agenda Item four point four, for the student field trip to Germany, any further discussion? Can I call for a roll call vote?
Yes, yes.
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 And I am yes, motion carries. Continuing on under new business, then tonight we are here to, um-
I'd like to recommend a reordering to bring five point five to the front of the new business.
Thank you, Kim. Um, yes, uh, so is there a motion to reorder the agenda so that Agenda Item five point five comes before the rest of the new business?
I motion that we, um, change the agenda to move five point five ahead of the rest.
I second, sorry.
There's been a motion, a second, any further discussion? Can I call for a roll call vote?
Yes, yes.
Yes?
Yes.
And I am yes, motion carries. Okay, then, um, moving on to Agenda Item five point five, we are here to, uh, we will receive tonight's third trimester reports. One from Mr. Galante regarding athletics, and one from Ms. Schweitzer regarding the park and recreation.
And one from Kitty Goyet regarding communications.
I overlooked that one, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Unless she wants to skip. If, um, we'll have you guys, if you, in order to speak. Julie, can you share your microphone, and they can be Jonathan Mitchell for this? Who's first up? Okay.
All right, good evening, Jared.
Does Jared know that we reordered? Okay.
Okay. Jared, we have your presentation up on the board. And we're not hearing you if you're speaking yet.
Was that my green light? I'm sorry, I'm on the delay from YouTube.
Okay, we now have you, thank you. That is your green light.
Sounds good, then we can move right into that first slide for athletics. So as we take a look at, uh, the way the Athletics and Activities Department played out this year, uh, we did see a variety of changes, uh, but I think we did our best as far as we could to make the most out of an unusual situation this year. I feel like we did, um, our best. We, we were able to get all of our athletic seasons in this year, some of them reshuffled into different times of the year. Um, but overall, everything actually worked itself out. Um, we've been able to see some definitely upticks in attendance and, um, some normalcy here as we head into our spring sports. Um, so overall, things have been pretty well. I, I'm going to report here in the next slide, taking a look at our, um, participation rates. So this year, we had seventy-one percent of our student body engaged in one or more activities. Um, traditionally, we're looking in the high seventies, maybe right around eighty, so we're down a little bit, but I think that would have been as expected um, with, with a lot of the different things going on here at the start of the year. A lot of our clubs did not have the opportunity to resurrect things this year. Um, but a number of our clubs were able to make things work here as we moved into in-person learning in the second semester. Um, our other big criteria that we always try to look at, obviously, one or more activities is exciting. Uh, but two or more is a better parameter for our kids being actively involved, so we always try to look at that two or more number. Our goal is to try to keep that around fifty percent. Um, this year, we were at forty-three percent, so just slightly, again, under kind of where our averages could be. Um, but it's something, again, wasn't a surprise to us, we kind of had that understanding. Um, and we want to make sure that we can improve these numbers now, moving forward. So I think our big goal for next year is going to be kind of making a big splash with having our, especially the lower-level kids, understand all the opportunities that we have here at Greendale. Um, that they can always find their homes somewhere outside of the school day in a variety of options, whether it be through our sports, our clubs, our performing arts, our musical arts, we have so many different directions that a child can go. Um, so we want to make sure they understand all that we have to offer right when they get here. Currently, we've been able to make, uh, slides, and we've had different videos, a little snippets, explaining all the clubs that we have here to offer at Greendale. Uh, so we've sent that to our lower-level students in the seventh and eighth grade, so they can see what's going on. We'll be sharing it again as students re-arrive here next year. And right at the start of the school year, hoping that we can get an uptick right away. We want kids to get involved as soon as they walk to the door here at Greendale. And our goal is to get that, those younger student, students and student athletes to continue to participate here for the rest of their career as they're here at Greendale. Um, obviously, what they do in the classroom is unbelievably important. Uh, but we also feel like the more we get them to stick around, either coming early for school or sticking around after school, um, the more we get them to, uh, really feel like Greendale is a home for them. And that's kind of our main goal as our Athletics and Activities Department goes. Um, so overall, we were down a little bit, uh, do have those numbers spelt out a little bit better for you based on freshman, sophomore, junior, senior classes in, in your board packet, um, but if you have any questions for me, please feel free to ask.
All right, thank you, Jared. I think we have a couple of questions, maybe.
So Jared, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Um, so I'm looking at the twenty-nine percent for no participation, and it's not a surprise, given a, a COVID year and the pandemic. How does that number compare to last year or to our typical years?
So I would say even last year was a little strange, though, because we didn't have a spring sports season. Um, but if you look at the four years prior to that, that number is usually going to hover around twenty. Um, so I think between eighteen to twenty-two would be something that's pretty expected. Um, so obviously, we want to get that back to where it was, having twenty percent of our students or a little over be virtual this year, obviously, that plays into it a little bit more. Um, but not outrageous, I thought, I was really expecting that numbers would be a little bit more skewed than they were, so I feel like we were at least within the parameters that we would have expected in a traditional year.
Jared, out of curiosity, was, did you see a discrepancy on the virtual students versus the in-person students on this data?
Yeah, we're still working on breaking that aspect of it down, it was a little tougher to get those exact numbers through our, um, current system of breaking it down. I do know that there are definitely virtual students who were full, um, as far as participating in clubs or activities. Um, a number of athletes were fully virtual students. Uh, so I don't think it totally plays into it, but I do believe that there's a good chunk of that. Um, and we're still working to kind of finalize what that looks like, and to have a better handle of what our barriers will be as we enter into next school year.
One additional question, Jared, I, do we do any comparison between like districts, um, to see where their numbers are at? Um, and not just this year, um, but in the past, have we looked at other districts to see where their participation levels are?
Yeah, I know, once a year at our, uh, we meet monthly for the Woodland Conference, so that's fourteen schools within our area. Um, and we always kind of compare and contrast what that looks like. I know our numbers are right near the top as far as participation rates, but I will say, when you add into, um, the factor of the amount of clubs we have, which is a lot more than most schools, and marching band being a portion of that, our marching band numbers are so high, I think that's really kind of excels us right away. But as far as when we compare numbers just purely sports to sports, we are within the top four, within those fourteen. Um, so we definitely feel good, I know a lot of schools are looking for having that one or more participation be above fifty percent. Um, and trying to have their two or more be above thirty percent. So we are dramatically above that number, and we feel good that we can keep raising our bar and hope that we kind of set a new standard.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jared, and then-
Thank you.
Kitty, are you going next, or Jackie?
Jackie will go next.
All right, thank you, good evening, Jackie.
Again, hello, and is this on? Yep, okay, good. Um, we have been pursuing the district's, um, goal around service excellence, but looking at the financial sustainability. Hopefully, this will be the last report on financial sustainability. As presented in March, during our second cycle, um, reporting, it was clear that financial sustainability is crucial in our operation. The department continues to evaluate the areas of the FEMA grant submittal, the decision to not rehire the Recreation Supervisor Youth Sports position this fiscal year, and the importance of continued programming for the community. Most recently, what we've worked on this time is our summer twenty twenty-one registration. We reported, um, next slide, thank you. Oh, I lied, Jo- Jonathan's doing a good job. We reported in March that the department revenue collection was at three hundred and seventy-three thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars and forty-seven cents through February. We're really pleased to note that the revenue collected now through April is at four hundred and thirty-eight thousand four hundred and sixty dollars and seventeen cents. However, this is still under the same period last year, which was at seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand six hundred and fifty dollars and eighteen cents. And that was just as we were starting to have to make those fifty thousand dollar refunds as well. So, um, the current fiscal situation is still reflecting that we will end our budget year in a net situation, but it should not be as strong as it was last year, and so we've, we've worked on that. Um, the summer twenty twenty-one brochure was on schedule, delivered to the printer on April twenty-ninete- on April nineteenth, mailed out to all Greendale residents on April twenty-ninth. And we feel it offers great choices for the community from traditional summer programs, but we've also added some new opportunities. The Greendale Fire Department is back for teaching CPR, the department is working with the newly opened field workshop in the village on sewing and crocheting type classes. The Reader Circle book discussion, they're excited to be feeling comfortable to come back. Um, we have a preschool teacher who has some great ideas for four-to-six-year-olds. Um, Greendale School District new face teacher, Amy Vida, um, has been a wealth of information and is willing to teach several children and adult cooking classes and game classes, so we're excited about that. You've heard me talk about the pumpkin chucking class that we tried to do last year, so trying to be creative. I went to summer school, so it is going to be for summer school credit this year, and Mr. Price at the middle school is going to teach it, he is really excited, so we're really excited. Um, hope we get kids to sign up for it. Mari Kart Tournament, we're going to run that again with Derek Donlevy, who used to work with us, we've got boys and girls basketball camps and much more. Um, you would also notice in the new brochure that came out that our youth section is a little larger this summer, because the Greendale Summer School is changing their format slightly, and so they were offering a few less enrichment classes, so we capitalized on that and tried to put a, a few more programs in. The department, we had to work with, uh, high school P E staff to coordinate pool time due to the change of instructional delivery this summer, um, for their program, and then how we would have to deliver ours. Um, just excited to say that we have a solid gazebo schedule on Sunday nights. Um, we've been working with Athletic Director, um, Mr. Galante, and working with that class unity, it's kind of like a GoFundMe, um, fundraising thing that the school district has used. And we're hoping to put that out there to generate about thirty-five hundred dollars for our summer season of paid entertainment on Sunday nights. So we think we can be successful with that. We begin our online registration this Saturday at eight A M. And we anticipate, based on the calls that we've received at the office, that registration should be very strong. And we're looking forward to turning around our fiscal situation. Um, I had noted in your written report that, at the time I had written it, our Summer Adventure Club, which is our summer childcare program, as of last Tuesday, when I had to finish that, there were sixty-five children registered at that time. I am really excited to tell you that as of today, leaving the office, there are now a hundred and one. And the initial deadline is this Friday, so I think parents, as I said in my report, are just feeling more comfortable um, back to work, looking for, um, that alternative. We will continue, though, to, um, follow guidance from the Health Department and, um, the School Board on how that will look, but we did it last summer, I feel, if we got through last summer, we can do anything. So, um, I just put together a collage, I did not, Ms. Gates in my office put together, um, a picture collage of the kinds of things that we've done. And, um, I think if you look, you can just see it's a variety, and this covers last summer through, um, winter-spring twenty twenty-one that we're just completing. And it's hard to see many smiles off of these pictures, but, um, we did accomplish a whole lot, um, by using the aid of a mask and social distancing. We were able to provide lots of opportunities for families, and we appreciated their support of registering their children for us. Um, so I want to thank you for this opportunity to provide our third, um, trimester short-cycle information. And I'm- And I didn't know Superintendent Amidzick was going to play a little presentation, but I have our Bloom and Grow presentation that I would like, I think Jonathan can key that up. And it's a slideshow. It's only two minutes, everybody, so, but it shows our youngest learners, our three-year-olds in our Bloom and Grow program. And this was put together by our Bloom and Grow staff, Lisa Corrigan and Denise Burnett.
Program. Any questions about those specific topics? All right, then we are going to turn it over to Kitty to finish up the third of the trimester reports for communications.
All right, thank you. Jonathan, you can go all the way past the title slide. So this year, we were auditing, taking a close look at the tools that we use to communicate with our parents and guardians, the parents and guardians of our Greendale School students. And in this particular short cycle, we were able to engage with families and community directly to get some feedback on communication and some of those tactics. Jonathan, please advance. We had the fortunate opportunity to gain that feedback through the strategic planning work, through the community visioning sessions and the listening sessions, and got some authentic feedback where people told us exactly what they thought about how we were communicating to them. This feedback really helped us to understand that we have work that we can always be doing. In general, people are satisfied with the communication from the district, but there are some tools that we could be using, ways we could be engaging differently, including harnessing the social media that we use, harnessing that power of our social media, and also the mainstream communication tools that we use, which would be more of our print or our direct platforms that we manage, like our website and also our social media pages that we use to share the stories with the stakeholders. Jonathan, the next slide, please. So some of the next steps, those ways that we can improve, things that we're thinking about are developing some key communicator networks, perhaps developing some podcasts. And I say perhaps because all of these need to be flushed out for their effectiveness and for, and finding out, you know, how, how we can ensure that the people who we're targeting will find what they need from these. We're considering some lunchtime Zoom meet and greets with family members, and also definitely looking at ways to increase the translation materials that we have available for our English learner families. Does anybody have any questions for me?
I just have one, Kitty. What is it? What do you mean by short cycle?
The short cycles are the way that we are reporting our continuous improvement process. This is something that we have been working on all year long. The district administrative team divides that short cycle into three, three trimesters, and we started the beginning of the year getting our baseline data, our baseline information. And then through the second and third trimester reports, we report to you, the board and to the community, where we're at in achieving those goals. And you have heard from me, and you've heard from the other members of the administrative team, Jared and Jackie, and you'll also hear from the schools, from the principals of our three elementaries, the middle school and the high school in the coming weeks on what their short cycle resort, reports are. And also, I think Tim is, is left to report.
Thank you.
Sure.
I also heard congratulations are in order because I believe you're receiving an award sometime this week.
Yes, on Wednesday, the president or vice president of the Wisconsin School Public Relations Association is coming to Greendale to give us an award that we earned from the organization for the Media Relations Campaign for the Rose Parade. So we did not have a Whisper, Wisconsin School PR Association meeting last year because of COVID, but, so our cycle was a little bit longer for when you could submit those entries. So we submitted that Media Relations Campaign and won an Award of Excellence, so I'm pretty excited for that. That was one of the, one of the items of that, pieces of that particular project was one of my most exciting days in many, many years as a communicator to watch. We had a media day where we invited all of the media from the Milwaukee area to come here to school and watch the band perform as they were getting ready to go to the Rose Parade. And it was amazing to watch. We had like four cameras going, and we had some print reporters, and it was so much fun to see all of those pieces fall together, and our students were excited and the media was excited. And then we all went into the auditorium and heard the band perform, and it was, it was an awesome day. So I'm excited that the district is being recognized for that.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I was just going to comment, a piece of feedback I received from some residents as well as from one of the village trustees that they really appreciate the YouTube coverage that, that has been taking place with our meetings. And in particular, one of the village trustees did mention the acoustics and how well the sound is that they're able, so I know there's a lot of work, including our students, that have been behind that, but I just wanted to let you know that it has not gone unnoticed.
Thank you, thank you. I will give all the credit to our students, to Jonathan, and also to our amazing tech department, and to the taxpayers who provided us with this outstanding facility, that we have the equipment that we need to make sure that, that our stakeholders can hear and understand what's going on in our meetings.
All right, very good. Thank you. All right, thank you. And then there, like Kitty said, you know, we do have these short cycle updates, and we'll have a final one in an upcoming meeting for the rest of the departments that have not shared out their short cycle, short cycle review. So then jumping back to agenda item 5.1 at our new business, we're hearing a recommendation to issue taxable general obligation refunding bonds in an amount of $1.75 million. So Jonathan, I think you've got maybe some guests that are going to be joining.
I do. I have Eric Cass of PMA Financial that will be joining for the conversation this evening. And this is an update to the board about a year ago, so in May 2020, the district took action, the board took action to prepay $800,000 of our Wisconsin retirement system debt obligation, which is Fund 38 debt. So when you have that Fund 38 non-referendum debt under the revenue limit, those are dollars that aren't available for operations. And so the conversation that the team had at that time was trying to create, create flexibility, not knowing what was going to happen with the state budget. We lived in very uncertain times of what was going to happen with state revenues and not certain what we might see in terms of any additional federal funding. And so the action the board took did two things. One was prepayment of that debt lowered interest costs that we would need to pay on that debt. We were able to refinance it, and those dollars we paid down, we then wouldn't be accruing any interest on. Second was created that flexibility within the budget to navigate this year so that we had sufficient resources to get into the classroom for what we needed to do to operate in a hybrid environment. So we are at a point where we've seen the landscape change financially. We've seen more information at the state level of those dollars that are going to be available for this next biennium. We don't know for certain where those dollars are going to land, but we know a lot more about what's available, and we know more about what's available at the federal level to support education. So we feel like now is the appropriate time to revisit that prepayment and look at what the district wants to do now as that second step of this process going forward. So Eric, do I have you here?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, yep. So I will let Eric drive through this recommendation, and then we'll take any questions.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to kind of walk through this funding that Jonathan alluded to. This has actually been on radar for probably three to four months in collaboration with Jonathan and his staff, as well as Robert W. Baird, helping to understand the rates and things like that. This is really a conversation by one of the positives of the pandemic, if I can call it that, which very low interest rates. So you have outstanding debt that is able to, able to be refunded and take advantage of historically low interest rates. Am I driving? Okay, here we go. Is that me or you? There we go. So as you see here on this chart, this is looking, going back to May of 2016. 2016, and it looks at the volatility of interest rates for a taxable issue, which this is unfortunately required to be taxable because, as Jonathan said, it is part of the pension liability from the Wisconsin retirement system that the school district had to take on when they joined that program many years ago. So what you're looking at here is a five-year history, and the point of this chart is if you let your eyes focus on the dotted line, that was the rate at the end of, or sorry, last Thursday, when this chart was ran by Robert W. Baird. And it just goes to show you that over that five-year time period, the majority of the interest rates are above that line. We did see a dip in that box from May of 2020 all the way through today. We really kind of pressed pause a little bit in March when you saw that uptick in the taxable rates, which have now settled back down. If we go to the next slide, understanding the opportunity is really centered around the interest rate environment, but the recommendation is to refund roughly 1.7, 1.8 million of outstanding taxable general obligation bonds that were associated with that pension liability. We just talked about the continuation of historically low interest rates in both the tax-exempt and taxable municipal bond market. And really, when we were looking at this over the last few months, there were a couple of things that we tried to identify for key outcomes of this refunding. Number one is we wanted to restructure principal and interest payments to create a level annual expense. To Jonathan's point, and you'll see this a little bit further on the next slide when we show the current structure of the debt, there's some volatility in terms of the budget resources necessary to meet the current obligations of principal and interest. And so one thing Jonathan spoke with us about is was their ability to kind of smooth that out, so you didn't need to compete for resources on an annual basis. Number two, of course, is a key metric. We want to maximize interest savings, which we believe we have a solution to achieve that. And then we wanted to continue to have prepayment flexibility, which, which is why we're looking at and recommending a direct placement with a bank, using Robert W. Baird as the placement agent for identifying the best bank with the lowest rate for that. You go to the next one. What we see here on this slide is a side-by-side, we call this a before and after. So the recommendation is to take the debt on the left, and I'll talk a little bit more specifically about that, and refund it to the right, which is the after refinancing, kind of that bluish green. So on the left, before refinancing, those are your actual payments from 2021 through 2026, which is the last year. That green box means that they're all callable, so we can do this without having to set up a defeasance or do any prepayment that would cost additional funds. And we're able to smooth that out. So if you see under that green box before refinancing, under the total Fund 38 levy, see how it bounces around a little bit, where it's at 300,000, goes to 86, and then an additional 500,000. Now, part of this plan is we drift to the right side of this page is to utilize 233,000 of what I believe Jonathan jumped in here as unidentified budget dollars for this year to help smooth out the refunding. So over on the right, the after refinancing box, you can see that the only maturity that's left is the 10,000 because that was already paid in, in March of this year, March 1st of 2021, and then the rest go to zero. Then you see the new principal schedule there under the header 1,750 taxable G over funding bonds dated August 2nd, 2021. And you see that we really targeted the opportunity to smooth this out, smooth this out right at that $300, $300,000 high watermark. You see the interest drops then to 1.9%, where currently it's 2.25 all the way up to 3.15. That is an all-inclusive rate, so that is all fees, legal fees, our fee, every fee associated with this transaction, and just wanted to mention that. And then over on the far right, you'll see the estimated annual debt service savings. Because of the use of the 233,000 of levy funds, it is a little bit hard to understand that. But if you go to the bottom right, the two key metrics from an interest rate cost perspective are gross savings and then present value savings. So the gross savings on an annual basis total just under 90,000 with this assumed interest rate of 1.9%. And we do a present value calculation based on, you know, interest rates today to draw that back to 61,799. The present value savings is a little bit over 3%, and we really look at 3% as kind of the minimum. Sometimes it'll drop down to 2.5, but right around 3% is really the minimum present value savings that we try to target in order for a recommendation like this to move forward from us to a client such as the Greendale, Greendale School District. So with that, be happy to answer any questions that may come up or share any other information that you might find necessary.
So I think, Eric, to help bring the conversation around, when we did this, we prepaid $800,000 for the 2021 calendar year and 2022 calendar year. And so specifically, we were trying to create near-term flexibility. And so by the time you get to the 2023 calendar year, your levy amount for Fund 38 would jump up. And so the conversation we had with the board at the beginning of this school year was, don't use all of that 400,000 towards educational purposes this year, if at all possible. Keep that as another tool that you can have if costs are running in a way that you need to keep operations. But it created that flexibility with the idea we could come back to address this so we don't create that gap. Because if Fund 38 jumps up, in short, if Fund 38 jumps up $400,000 two years from now, that's the year you have to find 400,000 in operations to reduce all things being equal. So Eric, you can correct me if I'm explaining that, that wrong, but I think that's the essence of this and why we have to come back to, to address it.
Exactly, yep.
So the, the proposal is to smooth, smooth that out now that we know we don't need $400,000 as that backdrop. Right now, we're looking at a new state biennium cycle with the anticipation of some revenue. And then, as we mentioned, we have Esser dollars that are supporting our mitigation procedures within the district, so we can address this to lower costs, but do it over, do a smoothing of that over the years that are remaining.
One last thing, you would still, again, retain the prepayment flexibility to have these conversations, or if there were additional funds, who knows what a year or two from now may look like. You do have the ability to continue to pay this debt off quicker, which is that bank loan feature that wouldn't always be available in the market, which I think is valuable to the school district as well.
That was my first question, so thank you for answering that. My second question is, you know, as we look at the end of the school year, and I know there's still a lot of unknowns, you know, I think this was a really great idea for us to be considering and something that we ended up acting on, that you brought to our attention, Jonathan, last year. Is there an opportunity to continue to put some funds towards this to buy down some of those one-time areas to open up even more? And if we did that, does that still, I mean, obviously, to save 60-some thousand dollars at a net present value seems kind of like a no-brainer. But is it, you know, is it still feasible if we would pay down an additional debt right now? Obviously, it would drop our potential savings in my mind without doing all the math here.
So the, the question is, can we identify additional operational dollars throughout the budget to put towards the prepayment?
Yeah.
So we, we set aside a portion of that 400,000 savings, so we would be looking back and crunching the numbers as we get closer to try and put that same amount back. But I would not anticipate a large amount of other dollars because we know, we know what the additional costs were that were COVID-related, and we're not running substantially below that budget at this point. So it's not an anticipation I would have at this point.
Okay.
And I think we'll see some of that in the next agenda item, where we talk about the preliminary budgets as to where we are at and then where we anticipate to be for next year. I have a question then. For 2022, our, our amount that would go to the levy would increase to $319,000. Have we identified where that additional $233,000 would come from then?
Yeah, so it would not be a change since we essentially levied additional dollars in Fund 10 and then kept them aside to put into Fund 38. We won't notice a jump in the Fund 38 tax levy beyond what's in the preliminary budget. So we've used these numbers as an estimate for what that Fund 38 would be. We won't feel it. We won't feel the change because we kept those dollars aside in Fund 10 this year and didn't have to dip into them based on the other budget navigation we did this year.
So then, so that won't impact the 21, the 21, 22 budget, but we'll see some relief then, starting in 2023?
Versus where we would have been prior to taking action? Yes. Originally, before the board took action in May of 2020, we would have had a total levy of just over $500,000. levy of just over $500,000.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments?
I'd just like to comment that, uh, I wanted to thank Jonathan because the explanation was very clear, and thank you for being so preemptive, uh, with the finances here for the school district.
It's a really good point, because I think this, this now sets us up well. And the other thing I think the community should, um, understand is that this WRS, WRS debt will be paid off then in 2026, so we're within five years of completing that, that, uh, that debt. Um, so tonight was an agenda item for information for new business. We will bring this item back at the next meeting to approve it. And then when will we go to market for, uh, to issue these, um, general obligation bonds?
Yeah, I would let Eric speak to that, anticipate a timeline of how we would want to proceed on that.
Um, so the intention of this would be to actually go to the market and have all of the final numbers for what I believe is your next board meeting on June 21st?
June 7.
So the intention would be, um, the market rates would come in like the Thursday or Friday before, and then legal counsel would update appropriate resolutions, and all the numbers would be finalized for your review at your board meeting on the 21st, with an, um, opportunity for you to approve a resolution to lock in the rates and the savings associated with what we received, again, that Thursday or Friday before.
So we do, our next board meeting is June 7th. So would we, would we take action at that board meeting?
We would be able to wait until the, the following board meeting. This will not be time-sensitive because it won't need to happen within this current, um, fiscal year.
Okay.
It could happen outside of the, um, wait, um, uh, I want to make sure I get that right, Eric. No, it'll, it will fit within this fiscal year. Yes, it will happen within this fiscal year. You'll time it just after that meeting because those additional operational dollars that we've set aside will go towards that prepayment. So it would happen before the end of June 30, correct?
Correct, yep, that's the intent.
Is there any reason to expedite that for interest rates, or do we feel pretty confident?
Yeah, when does the Fed meet next?
Exactly.
The, the 21st is, so then, will we do anything at our next board meeting then?
We, we would not have this as an agenda item.
And then we would take action at the June 21st board meeting?
Yeah, Eric, I think the board's question is, would you recommend them expediting to the first meeting in June, which would be June 7th, in terms of interest rate risk we could be subject to?
We're not posted now.
Um, we are, and I would 100% agree with, you know, trying to lock in rates here. Um, as I sit here today, we're really out with the holiday in there. I would just want to circle back with Jonathan to see if that's achievable, or if legal counsel to meet that timeline.
Jonathan, we'll leave it at your discretion as to whether to bring it back at the June 7th or the June 21st meeting, knowing that we have flexibility and that, um, it seems, you know, around the table that there is support for, for this, um, for this refinancing or refunding. Okay. All right, thank you very much. Then, continuing on, then, we are hearing the proposed 2021, 2022 preliminary budget. So again, for school districts, our budgets run from July 1st through June 30th, so we are coming up on, uh, needing to approve a preliminary budget, um, that we will then operate with until further dollar and further amounts are known from the, at the state level, and then we continue through the end of October to actually approve tax levies. But the first step there is to actually approve a preliminary budget. So Jonathan, you want to share?
Yeah, so beyond what was in the written report, I wanted to highlight a few items as we continue our work in developing the preliminary budget. So thinking through our budgetary principles, our process, the development, thinking through some of our long-range planning, and then what the outlook is and next steps on the, the budget. Um, so we always want to reiterate our budgetary principles, so these are those guiding ideas that help us make difficult decisions when we're thinking about fixed amounts of resources that we want to align as best as possible to make a difference for kids. So we're thinking about being proactive, positive, and putting students first. We want to recommend budgetary decisions that are driven by data. We're going to invest in programs that are in line with our district goals and priorities, and that's important as we think about our new strategic plan and being able to pivot to match that. We want to prioritize resources for our Tier 1, our universal instruction support strategies. We're going to maintain flexibility with the following class-sized targets that we're working to achieve. We're working to ensure equality and equity in how resources are allocated. We're going to recommend and invest in programming that can be sustained in the long term. We want to allocate sufficient resources to fulfill the reasonable needs of the curriculum review process. We're going to be transparent about what is being funded in the budget and utilize possibilities, thinking and finding alternative solutions to budgetary challenges. And so hopefully, the, the last conversation that we had underscores some of those things that we're trying to do to navigate, um, as best as possible to find those resources that we need. And we, I take this to kind of the 10,000-foot view, so what does it look like as we're , um, working through that budgetary process? So we have that needs identification, and we work purposefully to work on identifying student needs before we look at what those revenue limits are. We want to know, um, we don't want our conversations to be limited on the forefront. We want to understand emerging student needs and then work to meet those as best as possible. Number two, projecting that revenue allocation is a challenging, uh, part right now because we don't have finality to the new state biennium budget. As that information comes in, it'll be much easier for us to project what those final revenue numbers will be for next school year. Um, then step three, we're working to prioritize those investments within the dollars that are available so that we have a balanced budget, and so we work to refine it. And so we're going to work around those guiding principles. Here, we, we show with our Vision 2020, and now with our new, uh, work around strategic planning, we'll fold that in as well and make that the center of our work, um, in building the budget. In terms of timeline, as soon as we're finished with setting a tax levy at the end of October, we're already getting going with setting up our budgetary process for the next year. So here, um, you see from November to March, we're working on that needs identification. Um, then in January, we begin having that conversation with the board on what those revenue projections look like. That gives us the time period between February and May to do our work in prioritization of the budget based on the information we've got available. And then in May and June, we have this conversation with the board regarding the preliminary budget and have that approved at the second meeting in June. And then October 15th, we have our final budget, um, the last three pieces of information that we get there, um, uh, last two, the student count at the end of September, and then our state general aide in the middle of October. Uh, we provided a couple links in the presentation, just talking through some of those internal budget review steps. What are we doing to have conversations with our team members about the needs within the, the school district? And then what are the steps that we utilize to build the budget? And how does that look, um, when we look at this 12-month timeframe of starting need, discussion of needs identification, all the way through that final refinement and proposing a tax levy to be approved by the board? Any questions so far? So then, as we look forward, uh, a big project that we've been working on for the last, uh, year and a half, I mean, most of the time that I've, I've worked in the, the district, I'm finishing up my second year, um, right now, is identifying some long-range capital plans. So as, it's important as we come to the end of a referendum project, and, um, we were able to complete that on time and on budget, um, and have a limited amount of dollars that are available for contingency, um, projects, uh, making sure that we have a solid list of what are the things that we need to do and invest in from a capital and programming perspective in the long term. So you see some examples here, whether it's roofing, or HVAC, or our technology infrastructure, having those conversations and laying things out over a five-to-10-year period, identifying those emerging costs that we'll have to keep our infrastructure at a high level. So here, you'll see a snapshot of some of that work that we're doing, uh, with a third party called SiteLogic, who's come in and done a full inventory of HVAC equipment in our district, identified ages, identified current condition of that work, um, and starting the process with us of doing, um, commissioning following the end of our referendum, um, and being able to do that district-wide. So you see just one, one snapshot as an example of the work that we're doing to inventory, and then here, being able to identify what is the current age and what is going to be the upcoming, um, status and priority of replacement. So financially, we would be able to peg that, um, in the one-to-three-year, three-to-five or five-to-10-year period, what might be coming up, um, for additional capital work. Another example would be, um, a key document that we work on within technology, and so this is something that Ryan Jonas and I have worked on, identifying what are going to be those capital investments. If we have wireless access points that feed internet into our classrooms, those will last a set amount of time, and then you'll want to build that over a seven, seven-to-10-year timeframe, you're going to have to have that within the budget. You're also going to have to identify when leases are going to come up on hardware devices, when you're going to have projectors replaced, when you're going to have battery backups, um, needing to be done, when you're going to have phone systems replaced or servers replaced, and you want to stagger all those items in a way that you can build it into a recurring budget, and you don't create deferred, um, maintenance or deferred repair, um, deferred replacement within that tech budget. You don't want to stretch those things too far. Um, we want to be very efficient, um, in what we buy so that we're getting good value. We also want to be prepared as those things come up for replacement, that we've been thoughtful of putting them in a, in a cycle so we can anticipate what's coming up. So that's some of the long-range planning work that we're going to continue to do, and we'll continue to update the board as some of those lists and priority levels are refined, and we can give, uh, additional detail. For the preliminary budget, I wanted to highlight, um, the overall revenues and expenses within the operating budget. So what is proposed is revenues and expenses of $34,262,003. We're using a couple assumptions here regarding membership, um, of students of 2,501, a hundred-dollar per pupil revenue limit increase, so that would be projected. We'd make an estimate right now within the state budget, and then we are projecting a low special education aid revenue reimbursement. We haven't factored in any additional increase the state might make, um, to that sum of money, and that's something that the board has discussed and the board has advocated in budget hearings. It is currently set as 30%, um, but it's set as a fixed, a fixed dollar amount, um, within the, the state budget, and based on increasing needs of school districts across the state, with that fixed dollar figure, that percentage is not going to reach 30% this year, and if there are not additional funds added, if, if it's 28%, um, this year, we would anticipate it will also fall, um, next year, um, if additional dollars aren't added. So that's been an important topic at this point. We haven't built that in to ensuring that we can cover our operational costs, um, but as we get more info, we'll be able to take a look at that within the budget.
So Jonathan, one of the key things here is your, your, your second bullet point, that hundred-dollar per pupil revenue limit increase, that's projected, that's what we're using in this budget. I, I think in some other slides, you, and you've got to know on the bottom that the state has not finalized their, um, biennium budget. And I think the governor has proposed as a 200 or 250, but I think we're being conservative by, by building the budget based on a $100 per pupil revenue limit increase. Uh, that's, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jonathan, that's in line with what we've seen the past couple of years from the state? Is that true, or?
Yeah, two, the, the $200 that's being proposed by the governor is not, not out-of-line, I think.
No, I'm saying the $100 that we are using.
Yeah, uh, the $100 is more conservative, I think, than what we have seen in recent budgets, and so I think, um, a couple of slides ahead, um, in terms of, uh, surplus and deficit, as we look at that per pupil increase, um, we identified, um, uh, that that $100 adds about $252,000 to our revenue limit dollars available. And so if we were to go from $100 down to zero, if the state were to say we're not able to add additional dollars, then that leaves us with about $252,000 that we would have to identify somewhere else to balance the budget, whereas if it went the other way and they matched the governor's proposal of $200, then there would be an additional $252,000 that we could identify in the budget.
Thank you.
And then in terms of the preliminary projection, so we discussed with the board in January, um, a deficit balance at that time of 840,000. So we've identified here some of the cost, um, changes, um, significant cost changes are around those, uh, annual, those costs that we built in, in response to delivering instruction in a hybrid environment. So having additional costs for digital teaching staff, um, to support, uh, virtually while at the same time providing that in-person instruction in small cohort sizes. Related to that as well would be Wisconsin virtual tuition that we supported at the high school, and building sub-budget that we increased substantially so that we could keep building level subs, um, at the buildings, and then, uh, keep those individuals from moving between buildings. And so within this budget, uh, we're able to identify that $840,000 deficit from January, assuming the hundred and, $100 per pupil would be added to the revenue limit.
And can you help us, um, or at least help me, the additional revenue from open enrollment, is that based on increased funding or an increased number of open enrollment seats that we would offer? Can you help, help me understand that?
That would have to do with the open enrollment seats the board took action on at the end of January, and we would make the assumption at this point that we would be able to fill those seats that were approved.
So do you recall how many we're losing and how many we've approved for the new school year, or?
We approved 14, I don't know.
19, is what I thought.
But that's where the difference is, is that we are losing open enrollment through graduation, fewer seats than what we're gaining, or what we've already approved.
So within, within the report, we identified that we would have 205 returning students, and so that preliminary projection was based on that. The board approved an additional 14 seats, and so the, the, that additional revenue that's listed reflects going to 219 seats for next year and the additional dollars assumed.
So Joe, we may have graduated more open enrollment students than we brought in, but the projections that gave you a deficit balance did not consider any new open enrollment seats, it only considered the loss of the...
This is based, okay, this takes us from the, the original draft budget that was presented?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
That, that's why that number is $116,000.
Right.
Okay.
Another important piece, and we, uh, touched on this briefly in the financial update, was the budgeting, um, outlook for our three levels of federal stimulus funding. So ESER 1, um, which was that first round of funding in spring of 2020, was 232,000 of the amount was dedicated for us at the public K-12 level. We've spent or committed 95% of that, and then you see for the second round, there was a little over a million dollars, 319,000 has been spent or committed there, which would be 29%. And then ESER 3, we're waiting for that information. I think a natural question from the board would be, okay, we looked at revenue limit of $100 per student, if that does come in at zero, is there the possibility of looking at support through those ESER dollars? Um, and so that's where we would need to take a look at the budget to ensure that those costs... to ensure that those costs really were in line with that SR2 and SR3 funding. But we would be working to identify a deficit if it was coming from the fact that the state was not providing any new dollars to K-12 education, that we would work to identify any deficit from those remaining dollars, of which at current, the current time, there's about $750,000 from SR2, and we anticipate about $2 million from SR3. So we would be trying to navigate those federal dollars to cover that deficit if that were to occur.
Jonathan, if we didn't have that issue you just described, could we use any of the money for any other type of funds, such as, I'm thinking of Park and Rec, who took a loss this year, or Food Lunch, who also took a loss this year? Is that defined as part of the ESER funds as something that we could utilize it for?
There is conversation that you can have within ESER in some limited capacity. We haven't had those conversations at this point. We do have fund balance within our lunch program.
Okay.
And so that we anticipate will cover the deficit we will have for this year. And within Fund 80, on a one-time basis, the board increased the tax levy this year within Fund 80, the community service fund itself, to try to help offset the reduced revenues we knew would come in while we were still trying to maintain a wide breadth of programming within the limited numbers we had available.
I'm sorry, I had kind of the same question as Noel. Is there anything that the ESER funds cannot? What are they earmarked for anything specifically? Are we able to use them as we need them?
Not for anything that we need. They need to fit within the parameters of that program. So where we're utilizing dollars right now are on things like HVAC or additional nursing support in the buildings or personal protective equipment and barriers, or additional staff members to meet our cohort sizes. So we're identifying items that are very much in response to the pandemic. And given our budget situation, if we were going into next year without new state revenues, we would continue to be able to identify things that we need operationally to respond to the pandemic and what we anticipate next year.
So they're only earmarked for COVID mitigation efforts in schools? Anything that kind of falls in that category? And what if there's extra funds? Or do you not anticipate any extra ESER funds?
When you say extra ESER?
Meaning, you know, we don't need the money. We don't need the money for masks or sanitizer, or then where does the money go?
Well, we're not anticipating that at this point. And so we identified that those dollars are available over multiple years. We'll have larger projects from an HVAC standpoint that we'll come back with of those dollars that are remaining. We're also looking at that learning recovery of students and looking at additional investments in staffing that would support the learning needs of our students based on the data that we're seeing as we're testing our students this spring and identifying gaps that we have in learning that we're going to want to work to support those students and close those gaps as quick as possible.
I'll be addressing some of those in the update on learning.
Oh, okay, thank you, sorry. I think that maybe I'm echoing Secretary Vincent's question about how long the ESER fund can be used. Did you say that earlier, 2025 was it?
It was 2024 for SR3, 2023 September for SR2, and 2022 for SR1 September.
Okay, thank you.
And SR1 and 2 are already in hand, but SR3 is not yet, and they're still finalizing things. So like, for example, today, the last thing I heard was that they're going to put a 20% requirement potentially from the state of Wisconsin around learning loss. Maybe that's old news, but I just learned about it today. But things like that are still happening or changing, so there's not like a definitive list on SR3 yet. There's kind of a, there's more or less a list, and then there's a growing FAQ as districts have questions around things that they can or can't use those funds for.
So that's a good point. SR3 is funded at the federal level, but the federal government provides it to the states. The federal government has its own set of criteria. And then, correct me if I'm wrong, but then each state, as they determine how to allocate it, may add on top certain requirements or certain criteria. So that's where, you know, some of it is known at the federal level because the money's been sent out. The allocations have not been determined, and any additional requirements or criteria from the state level have not been decided yet.
Yeah, and I just have one more kind of basic question as far as those ESER funds. So where does the accountability come in? Do you have to submit receipts proving that you used? And who do they get submitted to?
Yeah, so you have to build a specific budget. So you're going to have to identify by line items. There's digitally, there's a portal where you're submitting a grant budget online, and that's reviewed by the Department of Public Instruction. And they've assigned staff that are familiar with the rules and regulations and can support us in questions to make sure that as we budget, those things are in alignment with what's allowable in the grant. And then they will request financial information to support those expenditures. And then beyond that, it will be to our district auditors to come through and do audit work to verify that we're in compliance with those federal programs.
Thank you.
Yes, to go off one of those questions in terms of if we were to not have masks or like sanitation in the funding going towards that in the next coming years. You talked about that extra money or the additional funding that is currently being used would go towards ways into recovery for learning for students. What does that specifically look like? And does that involve hiring other more permanent professionals? For example, such as counselors for students? I know that mental health was talked about, especially in the middle stages of the pandemic, and how it's affecting students, so yeah.
Couple of things. One is we, I don't know if Tim can pull it up off the top of his head. We did take a look at all of our people services team and reallocate and move around. So we've increased special education staffing, and we have adjusted and increased our people services staffing in the form of school psychologist counseling services. So that's already happening for next school year. And then we'll be looking at some upstream measures. So when you think about mental health, the more we can be proactive in that work, the better off we are. So in the update on learning, I have a couple of things that we'll talk about in terms of learning loss and hiring additional temporary staff to accelerate our efforts at learning loss, and then also around social and emotional supports that we'd be looking at.
Okay, thank you.
Learning recovery does extend beyond the summer, then. We're looking at what we're going to do during, we're looking at what we're going to do during the school year to support students through their losses.
Mm-hmm.
And one thing just to think about or to be cognizant of too is the one-time expense versus the reoccurring expenses by using the ESER funds because we could accidentally set ourselves up in a massive cliff if we fund reoccurring expenses and then we don't have any funds, you know, post whenever the funds run out. So just something to be cognizant of as we're looking at the allocation of those funds, which I know the district administration team is already thinking about.
Yeah, that's a really good point because you're right. I think historically, as either state or federal money has become available, we've tended to say, we're not going to fund a program unless we can then continue that funding longer term. Because you're right, we don't want to fund something for one and done. Now, there are types of support that have that look and feel because we want those, you know, one year to get us over the hump, and we'll talk about that. But you're right, we wouldn't look to, or historically, we have not looked for outside money to fund something unless we think we can find a way to fund it long-term.
Jonathan is really, he started this presentation with his budget principles, and they are the budget principles to which the administrative team is faithful. And we review them at the beginning of every conversation about the budget. So budget principle number seven, recommend and invest in programming that can be sustained in the long term. That is one of our budget principles.
Sustained was the word I was looking for.
When will we find out? Maybe you said this already about when do we find out the allocation for SR3?
We have not gotten a specific date. And I know that they're working on that as quickly as possible. But as soon as we know, we will provide that update to the board and then communications we have here at one of our next board meetings.
Is it, do you have any like projections? Is it going to be higher than, I mean, obviously more than SR1, I'm assuming, but...
You had something up there, didn't you?
Yeah, we have a projection of $2 million based on the federal funding and the allocations from previous.
Gotcha, I did see that.
Yeah, if we reinterpret the formula.
Okay.
That's our estimate. So we had good news on the health insurance front. So when we provided preliminary budget discussion in 2020, we were at 109.92% of our health insurance premiums through March of 2020. So that's as we were building the current year budget, and that provided challenges that we needed to navigate as we got to renewal of our insurance plan. Now that we have made a switch to WEA, we were just recently provided an update that we are at 73.07% of premiums for this year. And so we had built within the preliminary budget an increase of our health insurance of 5%. In the conversations that we've had with our consultants for R&amp;R, they believe that that would be a high number based on the information that they had to date. Things can change as they get additional information. But it was certainly putting us in a much better spot for insurance renewal proposal for this next year. Our insurance consultants have also investigated the idea of self-insuring the district for health insurance. And so we're gathering that information, and we're going to provide that information as we get it to our district budget team and have some of those conversations as we look forward. So some of our next steps. I talked about some of the conversations with staff. And as we're gathering some of these additional figures, the final SR numbers, the final state budget numbers, and some of our health insurance, our goal is to come back together with our district budget team, but also our citizen finance team because they provide good input on how we're aligning the budget. We talked about the finalization of healthcare, the state budget, the SR3 grant awards, and the development and refinement of our long-range capital plan. And then ensuring that how we're aligning those dollars is also helping to support our new district strategic plan.
Thank you very much, Jonathan, for your thorough explanation. The budget seems to be an ongoing process throughout the year, so thank you for tonight's update. Continuing on then with the agenda, agenda item 5.3. The next item is Building and Grounds Report. So I think we've got Steve here this evening as well. So welcome.
Good evening.
Hi, Steve.
Welcome, Steve. Welcome, hey. I'm Steve Coombs, the Buildings and Grounds Director. I believe I met you all. But if not, nice to meet you and look forward to meeting, working with you. So first off, we'll start off with, can everybody hear all right? Yeah, okay. We'll start off with some building information here. So this is the current square footage of our buildings after the renovation. So the high school's at 317,050 square feet. That is up 9,050 square feet from before renovation. Greendale Middle School's at 109, 627. There was no change there. Canterbury is currently 51,052 square feet. That is up 12,917 square feet. College Park, 48,534 square feet. That is up 5,341 square feet from before construction. And Highland View comes in at 71,230 square feet, with the largest addition at 19,830 square feet. And then just some acreages at JC Park, 3.75 acres, and 84th and Grange at 12.5 acres.
And Steve, just to make sure that everyone's, we list JC Park and 84th and Grange because those are school district property.
Yes.
Whereas the community center, Lyons Park, some of the other areas, those are owned by the village.
Correct.
And the tennis courts by College Park, are they owned by us?
That is village.
So what is that, north of College Park?
That would be on the north side.
North of College Avenue, that is all village property as well.
Steve, I was just curious as to the Canterbury acreage. I know you don't have it on there. Are the, part of the woods there is part of the school district, correct?
Correct, yeah. I couldn't find any updated information on acreage for Canterbury. I can definitely, you know,
It's not a big burning issue.
Continue to look for that and provide that.
I just wanted to clarify.
Steve, were you just listing that as shared, meaning the middle school and Canterbury?
Correct.
Was shared.
Correct, yes.
That's all encompassing for the two sites.
Continuous congruent, what's the word I'm looking for?
Congruent.
Congruent area.
Yeah.
All right.
So that is shared. I don't know if that takes in consideration all that woods area. Next slide. So the next three slides, Jonathan can kind of flip through. Those are detailed lists of our Buildings and Grounds staff. So per building, it'll list the name and their position. I'll just briefly outline it, summarize it. So we have five full-time day custodians. We have eight full-time night custodians, two part-time night custodians. Between the high school and middle school, we have seven eight-hour contracted cleaners. We have one six-hour cleaner at Highland View. We have two full-time maintenance employees, one full-time bus driver slash maintenance employee, one part-time maintenance employee, and one part-time district transportation employee. So he's our lunch and mail delivery guy. So when you look at that previous slide, the expansion of Highland View, there was a need to extend the help there. So that's where we, with the new expansion, we added an additional six hours per night at that school, and that's a contracted cleaner. Next slide. So this is, I think Jonathan's been updating on the work order ticketing system. So up to date, we have from November, 310 work orders completed. You can see in November, December, started off real slow as we got the system up and running. January, February, and March, were huge increases. April was a little lower. Maintenance department had to fill in and help out on some student transport needs in the morning. So we lost some hours there. And also the spring sports season started, so a lot of the guys are outside getting those areas ready for sports to start. So we weren't in the buildings as much. Next slide. Jonathan kind of touched on the long-range capital projects. This is a list. I mean, the list is much bigger than this. I just pulled off some examples to give to the board. So this is a long-range capital plan. It's comprised of a 10-year facilities plan. So this plan is a living document, and we'll provide a general direction to the board on how we can best invest in our facilities moving forward. So you can see there's a variety of things, parking lots, exterior doors, roof drains, new key system, LED fixtures in the auditorium. So you might ask, how did we get to this list? So Jonathan and I set up tours at each building with the principals and head custodians, and we walked through the buildings inside and out and kind of looked around and see the current needs and some future needs that they might need, both on the educational administrative side and then with the head custodian more on the building facilities. side and then with the head custodian more on the building facility side. And we thought it was really important to involve them in this, in this process and get their input. So the next step would be now that we have these tours done, we'll start by making building specific lists that will be shared with the principal and outside professionals if needed. And then we'll start to prioritize the items on the list and then ultimately getting to budgetary numbers on each item. Completed or in progress or process tasks since February 15th, I just put February 15th, that was the day I started in my new position here. So we implemented the work order ticketing system. That's an ongoing process. We started a process of inventorying all our HVAC equipment for future installation of a planned maintenance agreement. So that would be a district-wide HVAC like P M program on all equipment. That would include filter changes, belts, motors, grease bearings, monitor voltage and amp draw across the motors, adjustment of damper linkages to ensure proper function and proper airflow to spaces. We did a boiler treatment program where we installed chemical pot feeders and filtration on our boilers district-wide and that's checked monthly. Installation of makeup water meters on all our hot water systems. We did a boiler pump survey, inventoried all our heat pumps by P B B S and that was district-wide. Partnered with Interstate Roofing as our new roofing consultant. They're currently doing a roof study of all our buildings. Partnered with Tartan Supply for custodial and cleaning and sanitizing procedures and training. Hiring of one new maintenance person to fill my position, my vacant position, and that's Tom from the middle school. And then the hiring of a head custodian to fill Tom's spot at the middle school and his name is Nicholas Rump. Tom actually started in the maintenance department this morning and was his first day on. Nicholas started on the 10th and worked a week with Tom at the middle school to shadow him and his today was his first day solo there also. Next slide, please. Just some more completed or in progress tasks since the 15th. College Park asphalt project. This we were able to partner with the D P W, who is in the process of a village-wide asphalt project this summer. So we were able to make an addition to their plan and to their, to include College Park in the scope of their work and under their contracted price. There's a new playground going in at College Park this summer in mid-June. H V A C control merge, J C I to train, G S D ventilation assessment. That was touched on by Jonathan. That was the assessment done by SiteLogic. We're moving from the current maintenance direct ticketing system to a school duty essentials system. They're phasing out the maintenance direct, so that'll be happening this summer. H V A C filter replacement program. That's a plan where we are making sure we have the current documentation on filter replacements district-wide and that it's in line with the ASHRAE standards. District weather hazard plan. So when the horns sound, everybody knows where they're going in the designated rooms, safe rooms. And a maintenance program for all custodial equipment. That would be maintenance of your scrubbers, your swing machines, carpet machines, that type of stuff. We'll wait for the next slide. Here's kind of a, just a little piece of what the filter program lists, looks like. On the left-hand side would be your building and the next one is your HVAC unit. So every piece of HVAC equipment in the district would be listed on this, on this spreadsheet. It'll list how many filters go in there for this example. As Canterbury, we'll say room 202, it's a UNIvent, so there's only one filter. It's a 10 and a half by 58 by one. We're using MERV 13s. The filter racks look good. First filter change, second filter change, third filter change, and then so on. And that's for every piece of equipment. We have an ongoing custodial training program. So I've been meeting with John Devery from Tartan Supply weekly with the custodial staffs around the district for proper use of chemical supplies and cleaning techniques. So we, we start off in very simple, like setting up the custodial carts and custodial closets. So all the carts have the, the equipment you need, the chemicals you need to do your task. And the, there'll be pictures posted of the carts and there's pictures posted for the proper setup of custodial closets. The next slide, also a picture of that. Proper use of P P E for the chemical that we are using. The setup of the Hilliard Custodial Management Suite, I'll talk about that coming up shortly. We teach the proper cleaning and sanitizing procedures for high-contact areas and then come back and make sure that they are getting cleaned. And then teach proper cleaning sanitizing procedures for restroom locker rooms and revisit that also. We created job cards with cleaning tasks for individual areas and training for proper use of custodial equipment so that the custodians feel comfortable using the scrub machines, you know, the ride-on scrubbers, floor machines, vacuums, that type of stuff. So this next slide is a, a picture of a custodial closet and we all know how closets get over the years, filled up with stuff. And this is an actual huge improvement of what all our closets here at the high school looked at, looked like before we started this program. So basically went in, pulled everything out of there, cleaned it all, painted, and then just restocked it with the, the material that the custodian needs to complete their tasks. So, you know, you'll have your paper goods, you'll have your chemical mop bucket, floor signs, brooms, so on and so forth.
Steve, this is the after picture, right?
This is the after.
This is the after.
I should have took a before, that's what I missed. I should have did it. So the next slide, this is kind of just a summary of the Hilliard Custodial Management, the website and software we use. So it kind of comes in three, three parts here. You analyze, manage, and train. So in the analyze phase, this is like your facility data. So this is where you enter like your spaces. Is it a classroom, a gym, locker room? And then you, you type in your flooring, is it carpet, hardwood, tile, furniture, meaning, you know, 30 student desk, a teacher's desk. So you enter that all in, then you enter your building cleaning staff, you know, your full-time, part-time, your cleaning hours, the supplies you're going to need to clean those areas, and the equipment you're going to use, vacuums, floor machine, scrubbers. And then this program manages this and it, under the task manager tab, you can manage staff workloads. And this is where you actually start assigning classrooms to employees and creating routes for them to do in the school. And then there's a report generator where you can generate reports that communicate department effectiveness and automatically create cleaning procedures and department manuals. The training is ongoing, it's online training tool for both the cleaning staff and the supervisors. And kind of the overview for this system is, the system establishes a baseline cleaning program and then optimizes it to deliver better cleaning results. This is kind of just a, an example of one of the cleaning cards I have, I have some over there I could show you, but there'll be one for each area. So the one we have up there right now is for classroom cleaning. So there's actually six of them. There's classroom, hallway, cafeteria, restroom, office, and locker room. So on this card, if you look on the left-hand side, it'll say the tasks that are assigned to each one of those rooms. The next tab over is the product that you're going to use to complete that task. Here mainly we're using the number 24, which is the Q T plus for sanitizing. How you're going to apply that down in the right-hand corner is going to be your equipment needs. So to clean this room according to this task card, you'll need your cart, a dust mop, lobby broom, lobby dustpan, damp mop, vacuum cleaner, so on and so forth. So you get the, the idea, but every card has that thing, so I don't know if you want to show that. So we like that idea. It's kind of a professional thing. Each cart will have that on there for each custodian on their cleaning cart. So, you know, it's, if somebody asks, you know, how's my room getting cleaned? You know, you can pull the card out and say, this is what we're doing exactly. This is the chemical we're using. And it also is a great tool for us to go back and look at that card and inspect the room after they cleaned it to, you know, to make sure that it's getting done according to that card.
These are really impressive.
Are these new since you took over?
Yeah, we've been working on this, yes. Job cards, yeah.
So I assume staff, if they want, want to, if staff want to know like when their filters are changed or whatever, you have that right in the system so they can just simply ask, right?
Correct, yep. Yep, it's a document that's updated, yep.
Nice.
Jonathan and Steve have been working to define processes that increase our efficiencies across the board and give us opportunities to continue to improve our time and our efficiency and therefore our cost.
Yeah, Jonathan's been a great help. Like I said, I, I've worked for the district for 28 years, but more as the worker in the maintenance custodial department and now, you know, doing this with all the procedures and stuff, it's been great to have, you know, him help me out.
So with the contracted, because we do have some contracted services that come in, do the night custodians oversee that or how does that get, like who, who checks in on them?
For the most part, the night custodial will get them going with their cart and send them to their areas to clean. They do have a supervisor on site that if something comes up, that supervisor is in the district that can come here and, you know, relay what, what we need. I forgot to mention, I also do have those cards in Spanish for some of our contracted cleaning and they correlate exactly with that, so.
I think to add to that point, the, the training that we talk about that's happening on a weekly basis on Tuesdays, we've extended that all year to that contracted cleaning staff. They're part of the team. And so we should be working as one team and ensuring the consistency of those procedures. And so Steve's done a really good job of following up to make sure that they're supported with all those procedures and also making sure that their site supervisor from the contracted cleaning company is visible, I mean, in the buildings and making sure that they don't have questions, make sure that they don't have any needs for supplies. You saw our custodial closets, we've got things organized, they can find the things that they need during the night, but we want to make sure, for as important as it is to be thorough in cleaning every night and detailed and cleaning every night, that everyone's got those resources.
Yeah, we got a really good cleaning staff, contracted cleaners, both at middle school and high school and Highland View, so really good cleaners.
And like, I'd like to publicly thank the custodians, and you mentioned the bus drivers earlier, that's two very critical parts of running a school and they often go unthanked. And especially this year, obviously the custodians have, have doubled, tripled their work, so just wanted to publicly thank them. I had one question for you about the HVAC systems. I noticed, I, I, I don't know if I read somewhere that Merck, the, is that's a pretty high, high?
MERV 13?
Yeah, that's about as high filter as you can get, right?
Yep.
And in a, unless you're in a surgical, you know, unless you're in surgery somewhere. And so could you just, and, and if you, I'm sorry, because I'm, you know, I'm asking you off the cuff, so maybe you won't know, but the air quality then, using those filters is what? What would, I mean, how do you describe the air quality?
Well, the MERV 13 is going to pick up more of the smaller microns of the, you know, air. So obviously the air coming out of a MERV 13 filter is cleaner than a different filter, say a MERV eight or lower. Is the MERV 13, John, that's right around HEPA, right?
HEPA, 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 you're going to be at MERV 17 or higher. You can go, you can go higher. You have to gauge the equipment itself and what is appropriate because the, you're reducing air level that's passing through as you go up in MERV rating. And so there is only a certain height that you can go to and it can still be safe for the equipment. So we've made sure that we maximized what we can go to while being safe for the equipment.
Right.
And so most all of the equipment in the district's at that MERV 13.
Most is MERV 13. We do have some, some areas with older equipment that are at the MERV eight level just because they can't, they can't sustain that higher.
Sure, it's like an, it's like an old furnace or something.
Exactly.
Yeah, does the, was the MERV eight sort of our pre-COVID status and?
Correct.
MERV 13, you said, is our new?
Is our new.
Higher status. And is MERV 13 in, where are the MERV eight, I guess, left? Is MERV 13 sort of the standard now in our buildings or?
Yeah, that's what we have currently in.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say most of our, most of our filters right now in the district are MERV 13. They've been changed to MERV 13.
You will find, you will find MERV eight on the UNIVents at Highland View.
UNIVents at Highland.
Based on their age.
Right, there's one, Air Handler at Highland View because of its age, but I think most, most of the other schools. And I can get you that information.
Oh, no, yeah.
I can pull it off the.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to make the point, obviously the air quality has improved.
It has.
Thanks to COVID.
Correct.
And thanks to our, you know, that's one silver lining. It's the, the air is cleaner. And then where, you said it, Highland View's the only MERV eight, is that in a classroom? Is that in the lunchroom? Where is?
It would be the UNIVents in the classroom.
Oh, in the classrooms?
In the classrooms. And I believe the unit that supplies the gym is.
And the gym, okay.
I just had a question regarding staff and students, so especially this year given COVID. Were staff at all being asked to use chemicals to wipe down between classes and, and I'm assuming students not at all would be touching chemicals, but has there been anything like that that's going on?
Staff has been, we've had bottles of the, the Q T plus in the teachers lounge for this, for the teachers to grab with rags and they would do wipe downs between classes.
And the teachers do that, not the students?
Right, right. Is that correct, Steve? Teachers were doing the, the wiping, the spraying and wiping.
Paris says yes.
Yeah, so that would be, those would be part of intermittent cleaning procedures. So the CDC has had guidance on if you have more than one individual using the same space, like they're sharing the same desk.
Right.
That you would provide a cleaning or disinfecting procedure. And so there is a disinfectant that's been provided. We've provided the safety data sheet to all staff and engaged in that conversation if there's questions. But the gentleman that Steve's talking about, John Devery of Tartan Supply, has that direct connection with the chemists that work for that company. And as we've had specific questions from staff, and rightfully so, like trying to ensure their own safety.
Right.
We've gone into those conversations with Hilliard, which is the chemical provider where we're getting those disinfecting chemicals to get specific responses. And so staff want to know what's in here and what are the potential hazards of this.
And I think when Thor and I went to the high school a couple of months ago, we, we saw that as, as the students, you know, came in and out at the high school level particularly, we saw the, the staff, you know, spray and wipe down the desks. Thank you very much.
So just in closing, I just want to, you know, our goal in the Buildings and Grounds Department is to provide a healthy and safe learning environment for all staff and students.
Thank you.
Thank you for your role and thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
All right, continuing on then, agenda item 5.4. So we are scheduled to hear a D P I instructional hours waiver.
Yes, the Department of Public Instruction mandates a number of instructional hours per school year. They used to require a number of days and a number of hours, but about three to four years ago, they shifted away from the days requirement and just have an hours of instruction requirement. At the elementary level, there are one. At the elementary level, there are 1,050 hours of instruction required. And at the seventh through 12th grade level, there is 1,137 hours required of instruction on an annual basis. The school board approves the calendar for the school year, and it's the responsibility of administration to ensure that the school day schedule and the length of the school day is sufficient to meet those minimum hours based on the calendar that is approved by the board. So this year, we've made adjustments to the school day. When the board approved the calendar for the 2021 school year, there were sufficient hours within the scheduled school day to exceed the minimum hours of instruction for the Department of Public Instruction. However, based on COVID, we had to make some modifications to our schedule and to our school day for safety reasons and for mental health reasons in terms of the length of an online virtual day. So the elimination of the resource period at the beginning of the day was done for three reasons. One was the reducing the amount of contact that students had, the groups with which students were cohorted, cohorted. Two is that evidence during the 2019, 2020 school year determined that the resource period was not having a significant or any impact on student learning and student outcomes, which you'll hear a little bit more about in the next presentation. And so the elimination of resource and the virtual learning Wednesdays and the number of days that we needed to transition to virtual, we have fewer hours than that minimum requirement for the Department of Public Instruction. This year, due to COVID, they are allowing waivers from that instruction. We did have a hearing and approve a waiver from hours of instruction for the 1920 school year based on the revisions, and we are required to have a hearing, and the board has to take action to request a waiver from the hours of instruction at the Department of Public Instruction. So we are close, but we are still short hours, and we thought, instead of adding four or five days to the end of the school year to make that up, that we would request a waiver.
So this may be a simplistic analogy, but the way I can think of it is, pre-COVID, we may have had snow days where we had scheduled in the calendar to be in attendance on those days. Something happened, the weather, the inclement weather caused us to close those days. We did not teach on those days, so we had to make those up at the end of the school year. So is that a fair analogy?
That's a fair analogy. And it's happened 30 minutes at a time, rather than full days at a time, but yes. And rather than make that up, we're still being held accountable for student outcomes, and we'll talk a little bit about what we're doing there and where we're at. But we were not able to meet minimum hours because of safety protocols for COVID.
So, Dr. Midsick, I'm going to start practicing. In a memo from HR, it says, "A public hearing will be held on 5/17/2021 to allow for community input and feedback regarding approval of this waiver request." Is that public hearing right now, today?
Yeah, so during citizen comments, this is an area on which people can comment, so.
So that's.
If they haven't commented, which we haven't heard any comment on the department, the hours for the 21, 2021 school year, at the end of the meeting during citizen comments, they can comment on the instructional hours waiver, and then we would bring this back to you for a vote.
Okay, so President Caprito, I just want to clear, that's, that's why I was hoping to let more people speak, because this was cited as an agenda item, and it was supposed to be a public hearing. So just obviously, that, that didn't happen.
This is for the 2021 school year, and the citizen comments were related to the 2122 school year.
Okay, so you're, so, yeah, to break this into small pieces, then, you're, you're asking for board approval to petition DPI to waive the minutes for the 2021 school year?
Correct.
So that's one part.
For the current school year.
For this current school year, okay.
So again, my analogy was, it's as if we had more snow days this year, you know, less teacher contact hours, and now need to petition for a waiver, but that's exactly right.
Okay.
And so we are, we will be posted to vote on this at our next meeting, then?
That's correct.
Okay.
And, and our vote, all that will do is that will allow administration to submit a waiver to DPI. Now DPI has indicated that they will be, I don't want to say lenient, but they, they will grant waivers for just this purposes, just because we've been in, you know, the past two years. And this is similar to what happened for the 2019, 2020 school year, when, if you recall, last March, March of 2020, you know, the schools went virtual. And again, at that time, we fell below the, the minutes threshold, so the DPI said, we can petition for a waiver, and we did so at that time. So we're doing what we did last year. That's, that's the idea.
Okay.
This school year, the Department of Public Instruction listed well over 100 state mandated requirements that a district could apply for a waiver. And in order to apply for a waiver, you need to hold a public hearing, and the board has to recommend that we apply for a waiver. We have applied for one waiver this school year, and that was a waiver from educator effectiveness. As we discussed at that time, we are still providing teachers with feedback, but not the burdensome paperwork of educator effectiveness. And so this is the second waiver, and we do not anticipate needing to apply for any additional waivers this school year. So of the 100-plus available, we are seeking to apply for a second one, and that will be our total.
And to put it in perspective, the virtual days still counted as student contact time, so do you have any idea, like, maybe you said it before?
So there's two things that happen with the virtual time. Virtual Wednesdays at the elementary level, the way that specials were worked out, it was a shortened school day for them because of the time on task and the screen time. And at our middle school and high school, we also shortened the school day of live video. In many cases, students were assigned additional assignments after the live synchronous instruction happened. However, it was not universal across the board, and therefore, we did not choose to count that as instructional minutes, because we could not guarantee that every student had a full day of independent learning activities.
Gotcha, okay.
So anyone who opposed this waiver could come to the June 7 meeting and make a public comment about it, because that's the meeting we would be voting on the waiver?
Yeah, this is a public hearing, but they could certainly make comment at a future meeting.
Now, if we choose not to move forward with this waiver, we would then have to add minutes.
You would then need to take action to amend the calendar and add days to the school year the day before.
For the 2020, 2021.
The last day of school.
Right, yeah, no, I'm just trying to clarify that that, the waiver has nothing to do with 2122.
Correct.
It only has to do with this current school year.
Correct.
We're discussing it today, we'll be voting on it on June 6, 7, June 7.
Yes, yep.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but DPI rarely.
Signals that they're.
Signals that they're going to do a waiver, this is because of the global pandemic. I just want to, like, underline that.
Yes.
Right, they're not likely to deny it.
No, they're affording us grace because of the impact of.
But to Maggie's point, previously, it wasn't a, just, just ask, and we'll give it to you, previously, there was an expectation that school districts added days at the end of their calendar, whether it was a full day or you added, you saw some districts, including Greendale, added 10 minutes a day between now and June 10, or whatever the end of the day was.
At the, at the penalty of funding.
And I don't know if we're going to talk about this later during the reopening, but is there a correlation between coming below the minutes today, or this year, and the discussion of starting earlier?
No.
Because I think that was, that was some of the.
There's, yes, so there's three components. And so when we talk about suggestions about adjustments to the high school school day, we will, we'll kind of address that triangulation of why, why we're considering some of the things we're considering, which is not starting at 7:15.
Yeah, so let's think, let's keep that in mind, is that because we're below the minutes this year doesn't mean, because I think there was some insinuation that, well, that's why you're going to start at 7:15.
Confusion, I think there's been, there was some confusion.
Yep.
Yep, okay. Any other questions regarding this waiver? Otherwise, we will bring it back at the next board meeting. Okay, then, continuing on with the agenda 5.6 to get an update on the learning plan for the 2021, 2022 school year.
Yes, so students and families in the Greendale schools across the state of Wisconsin and throughout the United States have experienced a collective and prolonged trauma known as a global pandemic. The 2021 school year was focused on safely reopening our schools and adjusting practices to continue learning with physical safety protocols in place to minimize the spread of COVID-19. You can go to the next slide, Jonathan. This school year was unpredictable. We were facing a lot of unknowns throughout the school year, and the procedures and protocols and the methods of learning were unfamiliar and somewhat uncomfortable for our staff and our students, and we needed to make a lot of adjustments throughout the school year. Now, with the ongoing expansion of effective and approved vaccines, increasing rates of vaccination, and declining infection rates, we turn our attention to recovery as we plan for the 2021 school year. And we are looking at both an academic recovery and social emotional supports in terms of recovery from the impact of pandemic learning. Next slide. We have surveyed parents and students four times this school year. The first survey was done in July of 2020, where we just asked about what it looked like for reopening, and we used that survey data to make some decisions on our reopening plans. We surveyed again in October to ask students and families how it was going, what was working, and what wasn't working for them. We surveyed again in January, thinking about our return to learning following the spike in outcomes and asking about some changes to instructional delivery at the high school level. And we surveyed in March again to ask students how it was going. That was the poll survey. In the January and the March survey, there were a number of open-ended comments that became a theme. The two themes that we saw in the survey in terms of open-ended comments was, gosh, even though I want to go back to school five days a week, I really do like that one day a week for virtual learning. And so we wondered, is that, is that theme of comments, which numbered at least 20, is that pervasive, or is that just a few people really enjoying their time at home with their family? And so we wanted to find out more, how's that looking? The second thing that came up is, we're really struggling from a mental health perspective, and we need the school to do more to support us. We saw that in the form of a letter from students at the December meeting, where they talked about what we could do differently and how we could support them differently. And we wanted to understand a little bit more about what that looked like and what they were considering. So the survey that was sent to students and families about a week ago was really a survey for clarification on previous feedback that we had received. It was not to signal a direction that we were taking or anticipating taking. It was not to secretly get support for some change in the school day. It was truly seeking to clarify what we heard in the previous surveys before we made decisions about how to make adjustments to the future school years. We did not ask the questions at the elementary level, because we had not seen that level of pervasive comments. And given the number of students that we have in Wednesday virtual care, in Wednesday childcare, and the, the structure of how virtual days run at the elementary, there was not a need to ask, because it did not come out as a theme in our survey. And it was obvious from the use of our childcare that we didn't, that that was not a consideration for the majority of our families. Although we did see in other places, people comment that they liked the day at home, but that's not going to continue. So maybe asking the questions in a survey led to some confusion, and people were misled that we were going down a path that we weren't. It was truly for clarification. You can go to the next slide, Jonathan.
Do you think, Kim, if I could just add, do you think it, maybe in the future, just explaining what you just said on the survey, this is the purpose of why we're doing this survey, would that?
You know, some of the criticism of the survey questions is that we said too much. And really, we said that to explain why we were asking. We surveyed you, we got some feedback, we want to understand where you're at. And so I think it was stated in the survey, but because some people were trying to interpret it as something that it wasn't, it may have led to some speculation that was inaccurate about it. So one of the things that we also saw themes in conversation and based on some emails was around CDC safety guidelines. And throughout the pandemic, we have followed the CDC recommendations and worked with the Greendale Health Department to interpret those recommendations. So one area that we wanted to understand was, as we move forward, as we consider the changing guidelines that are happening from the CDC, do you want us to continue to follow the guidelines? Administrators and teachers are highly trained and highly skilled at providing instruction and supporting students' learning, growth, and development, but we recognize that we are not experts in public health nor epidemiology. And so we have turned to our partners at the Greendale Health Department and School Nurse to provide guidance on interpreting the current best practices and recommendations from the CDC and the Wisconsin Health Department. To date, and I'm going to go to the next slide, they have advised on mask wearing, quarantine guidelines, contact tracing procedures, and maintaining distance through limiting capacities. Last Thursday, the Centers for Disease Control updated guidance on masks for vaccinated individuals. This signaled confidence in the effectiveness of the vaccine to prevent transmission of COVID-19. At the same time, the CDC further clarified that masks continue to be recommended at least through the end of the school year, because over 95% of our student population is not eligible or is only recently eligible for vaccine access, leaving the majority of students who spend seven hours in our buildings not fully vaccinated. For unvaccinated individuals, masking continues to be the most effective tool to reduce the transmission of COVID-19. Current rates of COVID-19 transmission in Greendale are very low, and that reflects both the high rates of vaccination among adults. There are 72% of adults are vaccinated, which translates to 56% of the total population of Greendale. I think there was some statistics quoted that said 72% of the community is vaccinated, but in fact, it's 56% of the community, 72% of adults, which is a very high vaccination rate. And it also reflects the masking requirements in schools. So on Tuesday, a significant number of our 12 to 15-year-olds, I'm going to, go ahead and go next slide. One of the things that we discussed with the Health Department is we were trying to understand the impact of masks, because there's been a suggestion that we leave masking to the family to protect their own health. And what we see from the studies that have been documented by the CDC, my mask protects you more than it protects me. So the idea that, leaving it up to the choice of the individual student, there are students who may choose to wear a mask, but they're still at high risk if there's an asymptomatic carrier who chooses not to wear a mask. Secondly, there is, there's levels of peer pressure that students whose families ask them to wear a mask at school, their peers might say, you don't have to wear that, why are you wearing that? Resulting in some families' wishes not being honored because of pressure that students feel to unmask at school. So on Tuesday, the, a significant number of our 12 to 15-year-old students have registered for a vaccine clinic. The students who are, who get their first dose tomorrow and Wednesday will be considered, won't be considered fully vaccinated until at least June 22. The CDC has signaled that they will, are continuing to review data and plan to update guidance for schools before summer. But until that guidance is shared, administration recommends completing the school year with the current safety protocols, including masks. We will revise our safety practices in conjunction with updated guidance and in collaboration with the Greendale Health Department as quickly as possible after that guidance is released. And we are anticipating that the guidance will be based on community vaccination rates and community transmission rates, as well as access to vaccines by the student population. So there is a possibility that we could revisit this before summer school begins and make some changes to our masking expectations. All right, next slide. We are planning to return with the five-day in-person typical class sizes next year, which means that our specials teachers, math, I mean, music, art, Spanish, and physical education will return to their normal schedules and their normal teaching assignments. In addition, some of our interventionists and specialists will return to their original support positions, so that's important to note. That is what we are planning for the 2122 school year.
So class sizes will go back to our. So class sizes will go back to our recommended size-
To our recommended class size targets. That, yes. So the other thing that we will continue to do is, you can go to the next slide, is continue our hand hygiene. I mean, why not? That's really just a good practice about anything. You don't need a pandemic to practice good hand washing. And so we'll keep all of our hand washing tools in place and make sure that kids are repeatedly taking care of that hand hygiene to reduce the spread of germs of any kind. So that is what we're looking at with regards to safety protocols. We had the board has, you can go back to the, the board has not specifically taken a vote on whether or not we should require masks in school at any point during this school year. It has been discussed as part of handbook. And so just like you don't have a conversation about whether or not we should require shoes or whether or not we should consider whether or not kids can wear hats to class, it's the same with masking. It's a safety measure. And so we've discussed it, and you've approved it in the staff handbook because as part of a staff handbook, you've also approved it as part of the student handbook. But we have, we do not typically take action on safety protocols of that nature as a board. If you'd like that to change, please let me know. But that leads to a slippery slope of, you know, who do I call on snow days when I need to decide if the roads are traversable for kids to get to school? So I, part of what we're doing in this presentation is consulting with the board so that we can make decisions. And so if you would like to provide direction, I would welcome a discussion about any of the safety protocols so that we can review it with our team. So I just want to open that up here.
Dr. Amidzick. But the board does set policy. And so if President Crippito did ask for masks to be on the agenda, the board could vote on on that as a policy masks. We could have a COVID policy such as Policy 453.31 on HIV/AIDS. There's a policy. So the last time there was a public health crisis that affected the schools, it was HIV. I think we can all, all of us in this room can remember how scary that was when that first came out. So so the school board set a policy in October of 2004 on HIV/AIDS. So if School Board President Crippito felt that it was important to have a COVID policy, which would likely involve-
And just to clarify, I think it's a discussion that we as a board will have. I don't think it's a decision that I will make, but I think that's as a board-
Well, you're the, as the president, you would set the agenda with Dr. Amidzick. And once it's on the agenda, we we could vote on it and discuss it. So I I just want to add one more thing. In the, as far as masks go, in in the, you know, the, when someone registers to be a student here in Greendale Public Schools, they fill out a lot of forms. One of the forms they fill out is a student immunization form. And I'm just going to read the first paragraph. "The following are the minimum required immunizations for each age and grade level according to the Wisconsin Student Immunization Law. These requirements can be waived for health, religious, or personal conviction reasons. Additional immunizations may be recommended for your child depending on his or her age. Please contact your doctor or local health department to determine if your knee, your child needs additional immunization." So there is a precedent that's set with with waivers in school districts. So if someone felt very strongly that wearing a mask or getting a COVID vaccination went against their 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 medical health, their religious beliefs, or their personal convictions, they would sign a waiver. And and they are, I'm sure there are waivers. If the school nurse was here, she would, she could tell us there are students who have not been vaccinated for DTAP or polio or hepatitis because they've signed a waiver. So I just want to bring that up as a discussion point, that waivers might be the compromise to this debate.
So there's a couple of things that I think are important to know about this school year related to the pandemic specifically. During the registration process, there were five safety protocols that every parent signed off that they would abide by, one of which was wearing face covering throughout the school day. That was agreed to unless a medical waiver was acquired. And we do have procedures in place for students to get medical waivers. They may collect, they they may get documentation from their doctor, and we do have a number of medical waivers for mask requirements this school year. They submit it to the school nurse, and the school nurse reviews it and authorizes a mask exemption. In some districts, that results in isolation, but in our district, we have not isolated students. We have left them within their classroom with their typically developing peers with a medical exemption to the mask requirement. Secondly, I want to be clear that we are not requiring the COVID-19 vaccine of anyone and that the vaccination requirements is based on Wisconsin law from the Department of Health Services. We, as a school district, and you as a board, have not taken action on any vaccination requirements. That is not in policy. That is coming from state law. And we do accept waivers from that, as you stipulated. But I want to be very clear, we have not and will not independently require COVID vaccination. That would have to come from the Department of Health Services and be written into Wisconsin state law.
Thank you. I appreciate you clarifying that. And I just want to add, and I'll I'll tip my hat to Mr. Lotus, because I did do a quick review of all the student handbooks, parent handbooks, and the high school handbook was the only one that had a COVID addendum. And I'll just read the face coverings into the record. "By choosing to attend Greendale High School, students and families understand that it is mandatory to wear face coverings while at school and on the bus unless eating, drinking, or engaging in physical activity," which I think would include recess for the younger students, "unless medical documentation is submitted to the district nurse. Refusal to adhere adhere to this policy policy will be result will result in an out-of-school suspension for the remainder of the day. Repeated instances of refusing to wear or fully wear a mask covering may result in the student being removed from the hybrid learning for the remainder of the semester." So obviously, that was very strong language said in the beginning of the school year. It was in the high school handbook. It was not in any of the other handbooks. And obviously, it's it's a concern in the community. The room was filled here tonight with people.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
I think we're talking about next year. At least, that's where I thought we were headed with this. I didn't think we were talking about this year because I think if we follow CDC guidelines, CDC guidelines, and what I heard from the community tonight is they're fine with the rest of this year. We're just looking at summer school, and we're looking at next year. So I'm I'm not going to look at what's what's said right now because we're going to have a new handbook and a new student handbook and a new staff handbook for next year that will have different guidelines, most likely for next whatever is established for next year. Am I correct?
Correct. And I am anticipating that we will get revised guidance based on my conversations with the Health Department by June. So given that, then the question is, does the board want us to continue to follow CDC guidelines or not?
Well, we'd, that would have to be on the agenda, and we'd have to-
It's on the agenda tonight.
But for information. It's not-
Correct. So we're talking about it tonight.
Okay.
I think the question is, right now, the decisions that administration are making are based on CDC guidance, along with the State Department of Health guidance, along with consultation with the Greendale Health Department.
Correct.
Do we want them to continue that process, or do we-
Set our own guidelines for when and where and how and which guidelines to follow?
Correct. So so I think, can we have a little bit of discussion on that right now? Do we continue down the path using that process, the current process of CDC guidelines, Department of Health, and Greendale Health Department to set, to to set operational decisions? Or is there something else we are looking for administration to do?
Well, so will the will the CDC or Health Department have guidance prior to summer school? I guess that's the question I-
What we're getting is a signal that within the next couple of weeks that they will be reviewing and revising the recommendations for schools.
Okay.
They've been very clear in signaling that they want us to maintain the current masking in schools through the end of the 2021 school year. And there is an expectation from public health in general that the CDC will have new guidance on school masking within a couple of weeks.
I'm personally comfortable with us remaining the way we are through the end of this school year, not only because it was a handbook issued thing at the beginning of the year, but it's the guidance that we really have from the professionals at this point. And I know we heard from several people tonight that maybe are even in different professions and what have you. But this is the the best information that we've been getting from the CDC and the Health Department to help guide these decisions. And I I think that the summer school, I think that does beg the question, you know, is this our opportunity to try that and see? You know, it could be a total flop if we do it. And then where are we at for next fall? You know, based on that, I guess that's another discussion we have to have. But I I cannot see changing for the last two weeks of the school year with the idea that, you know, these un-unvaccinated individuals now are going to be at more risk. And I mean, you know, do we really upset the last two weeks of the school year for that?
And then what about going forward, then? Do we want administration to continue that same path? Or or do we want to give them a different direction to do something differently for the 21-22 school year?
And summer school, for that matter.
Right.
Any thoughts on that?
I mean, I'm trying to wait and let other people-
Yeah.
I'd like to hear from Thor. Yeah. But I do have a few more comments when they're done.
So any thoughts, Kathy, any thoughts? So then going forward.
So going forward, again, I I think it's important to hear from the experts what what is the best solution. I'm definitely more open to considering summer school for the reason that our numbers are probably going to be lower than they currently are with numbers of students in classrooms. And many of our summer school offerings, I think, are even outside. So, you know, so that I do understand. And I also understand allergies very well because I have them myself, and it has been hard wearing a mask. But at the same extent, you know, the the safety issues, I guess, come to mind. So I'm open to summer school being, I don't want to say a trial and error, but I think it's it's our opportunity to gradually move move to the next steps for what we need to do as a district.
Okay. So her and Noel, I want to make sure that everyone gets a chance to-
So I think I'm, I think we've heard from you and the folks that were here tonight about the rest of the school year not being necessarily the issue. And I agree with that because I think ultimately what that would do is create a, an issue on the other side of the fence. If we did change it for anyone who felt the opposite and wanted to switch to a virtual environment for a couple of weeks of school, and I could just imagine that being an administration nightmare. And more so than even just the nightmare on yourself, the nightmare on the students that parents want them to to transition. So I don't think that that makes sense in, to me, in any any shape, form, or fashion just because it's a couple of weeks out. To finish the school year, when they signed up to go with one model or the other, there were, they were informed that they'd be wearing face coverings, finish out the school year, make sure that they're wearing the face coverings. I'm I'm open as well to kind of what happens as we move forward. I do think that, you know, if I'm a betting man, based on what's been happening already with the CDC and everything else, that I think the guidance that's going to come out and based on the numbers that we're seeing within our community from immunization, that they're probably going to, you know, transition that fairly quickly to similar policy that you're seeing in a lot of different places, like going to Target. Now, you don't have to wear a mask if you're, you know, so on and so forth. Like, all these things are happening very quickly just because of what happened on Thursday. So the reality is that we'll probably have a lot more information in a very short order from the health departments and the and the health officials, which I think is going to also lead into what you were just talking about, Kathy, and what we heard from the community, which is the likelihood of some requirements from the Health Department in the fall are probably pretty low, for sure. And probably, you know, in the next couple of weeks, I think you're going to hear some guidance around not being required for even summer school. So I'm I'm open to that. I think the, going back to the piece that you mentioned before, you know, we've had a protocol in place that seems to make sense and and working with our health officials on this and having those conversations. They're part of our community and leaning into them and then listening to what the parents want and, you know, ultimately what's best for students and making sure that if there is some kind of issue where people are having with that in the summer school, that we can, you know, take advantage of of kind of listening to them with the smaller quantities and figuring out what we can do to to best support student learning. So.
Thank you. Noel?
I'm in pretty much in agreement with Kathy and Thor. Keep it for the rest of the school year and go along with the CDC guidelines. I'm a, not really a betting woman, but I have a feeling the CDC is going to lighten up on the masks for summer school and for school next year. And I I really hope that they do because I think that's what we need. But I I'm in agreement with Kathy and Thor at this point.
So one of the things that could happen is that they could come out with linking recommendations for masks on vaccination rates in the community, and they could come out and link it to case rates within the community. If that is what they come out with and our community is below vaccination rate thresholds or our community has case rates that are above a certain threshold, do we disregard that CDC recommendation and just move forward without masking? Or do we abide by that and adjust mask wearing based on data within the community?
When you say the community, you're including students being vaccinated, then, or because-
Well, we could reach, we could reach a threshold that the CDC sets on herd immunity in an area with just adult vaccinations. If we have sufficient levels of vaccination within the community, we could reach it by having 12 to, if we have 85% of our community, of our adult population vaccinated, that might reach a level that passes it. So it doesn't, they may or may not say that you have to have access to the vaccine at all levels. It may have to do with the protection of the herd. May be sufficient that they do it. I am speculating, based on conversations that I had with the Health Department. I'm just seeking clarity for when we are faced with decisions on summer school. And we don't have a board meeting to come back and discuss it because the guidance comes out after your next board meeting, but before summer school starts. What what would you advise that we do? That we follow the CDC guidelines to the letter or we have some flexibility and we disregard some of the rigidity of CDC guidance and make changes? So that's what I'm looking for in terms of direction. Because what I'm hearing is, I think the CDC is going to reduce it, so keep following them.
Yeah. Let me summarize what I think I've heard, and then let me summarize what I think I've heard from everyone, and then I certainly want people to react to it, is I think what I'm hearing is, for the remainder of the school year, continue with the the protocols that have been in place by administration from the beginning because everyone's aware that people signed up either virtual or in person based on that. I'm hearing from a summer school perspective, let's follow CDC guidelines, but let's may lean into it and maybe let's take it, if if it comes back and says, you know what, it has to be this, it's very rigid, and we don't meet that, I'm hearing that we may want to lean into it and say, you know what, let's use summer school as an opportunity to see maybe where we have some flexibility. Where could we do things that maybe aren't following the CDC protocol word for word because we want to use it as an opportunity similar to what we did last summer with the daycare program and with the park and rec to to see what can we do, how can we do this so it looks, I'll say, normal, where where students aren't masked and where students aren't, you know, you know, socially distanced? So giving you the flexibility that, yes, let's follow CDC guidelines, but let's lean into it a little bit if they are very rigid and we don't qualify and try to find ways to to get back to normal. And then for the fall, again, you know, it sounds, yes, we want you to use CDC guidelines, but we really want you to take a look at what's happening within Greendale and understanding what's happening with vaccination rates, with with infection rates, with things like that. And again, depending on how stringent the guidelines are, if we're seeing things differently, perhaps the local Health Department would say, you know what, here are the guidelines, but based on this that we're seeing locally, it sounds as if we would be comfortable with making a local decision rather than relying on something at a CDC level. That's how- on something at a CDC level. That's how, does that help you? And does that consistent with what you're seeing? Or are you guys?
I just want to, I just want to piggyback on that. And thank you, President Corpito. We didn't hear your personal opinion, although I'm, maybe you summarized.
My summary is consistent with what?
Okay.
Thank you.
So I just want to reiterate, since there were, you know, several emails, and the room was pretty full here tonight, that if people do have a medical, religious, or personal conviction reason for a mask waiver, that is being allowed?
Right now, what the handbook says is that there's a medical waiver, and you submit documentation to the school nurse for review, and then she grants the medical exception. We do not have any other waivers besides medical currently.
Okay.
How many waivers have we received this year? Are we talking dozens?
Do you have any idea?
Are we talking dozens, or are we talking?
Yeah, somewhere between 10 and 20, like less than 1%.
Okay, so the policy is that you're only accepting medical waivers, even though that contradicts your immunization?
It's not a policy, it's a practice. It's a protocol that we established as part of the return to in-person learning. So it's not documented in policy, it is a protocol.
Okay. And I'm just clarifying. And then the consequence for not wearing a mask at the high school, at least, it's in print, is what? Is your return to hybrid learning, I think I read? Was that it?
Repeated refusal would be a conversation to.
Progressive discipline, or?
Transition to a virtual learning environment if possible.
Okay. And then I just wanted to mention Policy 458, called Student Health Nutrition and Wellness. And it's a pretty long policy, it's several pages. There's a section here that says Public Involvement. Greendale School District Student Health and Wellness Team, the district will invite a diverse group of stakeholders from the list below to participate in the development, implementation, and periodic review and update of a policy as part of the Greendale School District Student Health and Wellness. So I think student health and wellness would encompass mask wearing, SEL, and the people that are supposed to be included are District Food Service, parent, community representative, a student representative, a staff member, administrative representative, a FIAD health teacher, the school nurse, the communications director, and a village health department representative. So maybe in.
That's the reopening schools team.
Okay, so they're already meeting?
We had 35 members. We met weekly over the course of summer, and it has tapered off. We have met less frequently. However, the safety team, which includes a subsection of that team, has met weekly and meeting every Monday afternoon. So we did meet today and consult with the Health Department on some of the revised guidelines.
Okay, so some of the parents that were so concerned tonight wanted to attend some of these meetings? Where are they posted, or?
The team is there. It's not posted because it is.
Are there minutes available?
Yep. It's about a 40-page running agenda.
Okay. And where would, I'm just asking for the good of the group here that was here tonight, where could they find those minutes, or how could they?
All of those minutes have been summarized in the monthly update on learning reports that we give to the board. So every time that we update the board, it is based on conversations at those meetings and pulled from the notes within those meetings. So we have publicly presented 10 times this year.
Okay. So and does that turn?
The other policy that I think is relevant, Mary, if we're checking policies, is we have Policy 453.3, which is communicable diseases. And there's some specific requirements around that that are applicable and have been applied for this specific pandemic.
I was going to say this, I was just going to mention something to that, and I didn't know about the policy, but this is a very different situation than just a typical health. I guess it's a pandemic. And so I think.
I think it was health and nutrition. So it had to do more with school lunches, the types of food being brought into for celebrations, things like that.
But that being said, I did attend a number of those meetings that Kim referenced, that the team has been meeting all year. And they have been very thoughtful and very meticulous about the work that has gone into this. So again, I know we're talking about the last two weeks of the school year here. I'm 100% confident that if we continue on the path we are for these next two weeks, that I don't see any great detriment to anyone at this point for these last two weeks of the school year. But again, I'll just echo that I think summer school would be our opportunity to possibly transition.
So are there?
I agree with that. Based on, based on community input. Jonathan, can you go back a couple of slides to the circle graph? It says safety planning. So we sought out, next one, there we go. So we did seek out input on how much do you want us to follow the Centers for Disease Control? And 65% of respondents said yes, follow all the CDC guidelines. So in addition to those in the room tonight, there are some that say no, don't follow them at all. We sought to bring in additional voices of parents and students in terms of what would make them feel safe and comfortable. So what I'm hearing is that the administration should take into consideration some of the concerns around mask wearing in conjunction with revised CDC guidelines, and if we're close, that we should err on the side of masks optional.
Yes.
I think that's what I heard. Yes.
Thank you for that direction.
Point of clarification too, Kim. So it was the middle school and high schools' parents that took these surveys, or was it elementary also?
Middle and high school.
And do we have a sense for, like, what percentage or demographics that we receive these survey results from?
It's about 50/50 students and families.
But just to clarify, so you talked about, we've done surveys about four or five times?
We've done four previous surveys that included 4K through 12.
It was all families. It was just this last one?
This last one was just requesting clarification on some of the open-ended comments that we had gotten in previous ones. This was not an end-all-be-all survey by any stretch.
But you have been getting a good sampling of parents. It hasn't been like this is only 10 or 20%.
Right. We asked specific questions on mask wearing last summer, and it is obvious that based on the changing conditions and the new learning, that some people who would have said that they recommended face coverings at the beginning of the year would no longer say that based on their understanding of the pandemic. And so then the question becomes, at what level do we follow CDC and Health Department, and at what level do we go away from that? And I think I understand that if it's close, err on the side of.
And I'll just also mention, yes, this summer, I mean, if Pet Palooza was any example for what we're looking at for summer activities in Greendale and so forth, people are transitioning. And I'm assuming, I mean, if Jackie were here, she could talk about some of the events that are going to be taking place. But I'm guessing that those guidelines with masking are going to come down for those events as well.
Yeah, I mean, we wouldn't be having this conversation if there was vaccine access for all of our students.
Right.
Because vaccinated, fully vaccinated people, the recommendation is that you can go unmasked. In our schools, the population of those who are eligible for full vaccination right now is limited to those 16 and older, and approaching 12 and up.
And I don't, you know, I know writing survey questions is really difficult and gathering the data. But I think people were asking for more, you know, very clear, short, easier to interpret survey questions. So whoever it is that is writing the surveys, if they could keep that guidance in mind. And I don't know, Dr. Mitzik, if we're, if you're, we're just sort of wrapping everything up, but I wanted to make sure that some of the other public comments were honored.
We're going to take a look at that next. That was just safety protocol. So we're going to take a look now at learning environments and school day.
Yeah. So do you have the direction that you were looking for?
Yes, thank you.
Is everyone comfortable with what the guidance that we provided?
Yep, thank you.
All right, great.
Jonathan, you can go to Slide 10. So as we've reported in our school short cycle reports, reading and math proficiency rates are lower than in previous years. And this is a graph of where we were in the 2019-2020 school year. So the first two bars are pre-pandemic, and the second two bars are post-pandemic for reading across the district. The impact of remote learning without live video instruction in the final months of 2019-2020 school year, coupled with the challenges of students moving in and out of quarantine in the fall, has impacted student performance. This is not to say that students haven't learned this year. Students have continued learning, and they've learned more than just their academic skills. They've learned resilience, and they've gained academic knowledge and skills through continued engagement and quality instruction. We recognize that some students have not recovered from the gaps or have struggled with the impact of the pandemic trauma when measured against the standardized learning outcomes that were calibrated under normal conditions. To ensure that students continue to achieve at high levels, next slide, the Greendale Schools is looking to add temporary instructional support specialists at the elementary and middle school levels, using some of the funded funding allocated for learning loss in SER-3. These positions have been posted, and these teacher leaders will serve to build classroom teacher capacity to scaffold instruction, to provide access to grade-level learning, and accelerate moving towards an integrated comprehensive service delivery within the classroom. The purpose of these roles is to co-plan and co-serve with classroom teachers to build capacity in the effective and efficient delivery of universal instruction, that's instruction for everyone, and targeted instructional supports. That's what do you need in order to meet the standards? How do you get equitable access to the learning for student growth in the classroom environment? Teachers in these temporary roles will provide instructional support and model delivery of interventions to students in the classroom environment.
When you say teachers, these will be licensed teachers?
Correct. Yep.
And the idea is that they would come from, I mean, we've posted this internally, so is it thought that they would come from our existing staff?
Yes, we've posted both internally and externally simultaneously. So as we look at internal, we are, if they move out of the classroom, then we would replace them in the classroom, but they would be ongoing in their position.
Okay.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
A question, just to clarify. So when you said there's going to be five-day in-person learning, that's initially what's the plan for next year. Does that mean that there will no longer be an option for virtual learning?
There will be an option for virtual learning. It is a very small number. It is 40 students district-wide, and so we're working on a specific virtual program that would meet their needs. It is likely not going to be live video instruction all day, every day for those students. It will be some combination of learning vehicles for those students who select that. It is a very small number of students who are selecting that right now. I want to go, next slide. So one of the things that will support academic recovery is to have proactive supports for social and emotional needs. I know Paris asked, and there's been some questions from citizen comments around adding additional people's services for mental health and counseling. That is not what we're referring to when we talk about social and emotional needs. We're talking about proactive supports that avoid mental health, and that is having consistency and avoiding secondary trauma, knowing that students have been traumatized by the pandemic, and strategies to manage stress. It may come in the form of sources of strength, where the focus is on hope, help, and strength, and identifying the eight areas that support our individual resilience. So strong instruction to proactively prepare students for acute or prolonged trauma can reduce the likelihood and the number of students requiring interventions for mental health. If you hear our People Services team talk about this, they are talking about going upstream and preventing students from falling into severe mental health needs that would require the support of a counselor. And I will turn to my team if you want to add anything to that. Okay.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
We've talked previously about implementing community-based mental health.
Yep.
Can you share me just where we are up? Because I don't see that up here, but that's kind of been a component that we've discussed in the past.
Yep, absolutely. And we'll have that in place. The pandemic, obviously, threw a bit of a monkey wrench into being able to acquire and have access to those services. Many of our community-based agencies are currently understaffed in terms of providing services at this point. We will have that lined up and ready to go for the start of next school year, to be able to provide those services at the high school level first, and then looking to trickle down that service down to our middle school, potentially within the same school year, but the following year, and then trying to head all the way down to the elementary level to have that community-based mental health available to all of us.
We should keep that in mind as we talk about some of the things that we're talking about here. All right, thank you.
Yeah. And I think also, I just want to say that we want to be, to Kim's point, proactive around, we don't want to wait until there is a mental health crisis that we need community-based. Not that that's not a great, not a great resource for our families and students, but our goal is, as educators, to give kids tools to be successful, and tools to manage their emotions, tools to work together as a team, tools to understand their emotions. So that's what that emotional, social-emotional needs is. It's around preventing mental health crises from happening.
Oh, go ahead, Noel.
Is there, one of the comments made tonight was that we're forcing the kids to do the social-emotional learning? Would that?
I'm going to let Steve speak to that when he comes up. He's been waiting a long time. But I'm going to let him speak to that in terms of what it looks like at the secondary level. We are already doing this by altering schedules. So on a regular basis, once every week, once every other week, we're saying, oh, today's a different schedule. We're going to do ACP today. So in order to get that lesson in, we're going to change the schedule. So we're already doing that.
And ACP stands for Academic Career Planning?
Correct.
And SEL stands for Social Emotional Learning?
Correct.
The SEL, is there a curriculum that you're following, or what kind of, where the lessons?
We're getting ahead of our.
Yeah, I'll let Steve speak to that. We're on the last couple of slides here. Go ahead and go to the next slide, Jonathan, and then we'll come back to that. The, one of the questions we asked, because there were enough comments that said, hey, I really like having a day a week, or some regular virtual learning, so I'm prepared to transition. In our responses, 50% supported a virtual day weekly, 15% said every other week, 28% said, no way, please don't do that to me ever again. So given the range of responses, we are not anticipating a weekly virtual day. That was clearly some ideas from some people, but not representative of the group as a whole. And we'll continue to evaluate instructional hours and potentially use a virtual day of instruction periodically to ensure that, because we only have one snow day built in, if there's multiple inclement weather days, we may turn to virtual instruction to not have to add on to the end of the school year.
Just to clarify, Kim, there will not be any option for parents to opt for virtual at all now?
No, there will be an option for people to opt for virtual, but given our original projections, we're talking about 40 students, K through 12. And so we're going to review and design and speak directly with those parents about what it looks like. It will not, we will not be able to afford or provide the live video instruction from the beginning of the school day till the end of the school day. It will be some modified version of virtual instruction.
Okay.
And I want, on behalf of those 40 students, and perhaps some more who did enjoy the virtual learning, I know it was the minority, but thank you for offering it, because those families might otherwise choose Wisconsin Connections Academy, or homeschooling, or some other learning environment. So thank you for trying to meet their needs.
That would be a very expensive loss, so.
And Kim, this question was asked of the families or the students?
Both.
Okay. And I think, you know, there was a comment about, you know, asking students, I certainly, you know, we're not going to be making decisions based on student feedback, which is why we also ask the families. But I think we've done, as a district, we've always included Student Voice, you know, which is why Paris sits at this table, to get that. So I don't think it was unusual that we surveyed students, because that's, we've always done those types of surveys.
So I'm in, in the middle of last school year, during the 2019-2020 school year, Mr. Lotus and the high school staff had been reviewing and discussing some of their data around grades, and some of their work around increasing the number of students who are getting a 2.8 GPA or higher. We talked about a lot of these things. And they were seeing some trends in the data that showed that Resource was not having the impact that was desired. They had made some changes to it over the years that it had been implemented, and they were considering making some additional changes. But with the pandemic, that was put aside. And we did not run Resource this year because of some of those findings and because of COVID prevention planning. So the high school staff revisited some of that data as they were considering what they learned from the pandemic, what innovations came about during the course of the pandemic that would prompt us to make some changes and improvements to our instructional programming when we return to a fully in-person environment. And I'm going to let Mr. Lotus share with you some of the work. And I'm going to let Mr. Lotus share with you some of the work that was done there. This is the final section. You can go to the next slide, Jonathan.
Good evening.
Almost good morning. The next 50, I mean, five minutes.
Please be mindful of your time, Mr. Lotus.
That's fine. We, I was, I was doing much more than I normally do over this last three and a half hours, making notes to what I thought I was going to say. I want to be really clear about some things. There's been a lot of different things said and clarified, so I'm just going to make sure that I'm, that I'm fairly complete here, and I'll probably read a little bit more than I normally do when I, when I, when I do present. But the discussion around the high school is not solely around starting times or ending times. It's about how we can best maximize the impact of our daily instructional time with our kids. And once we decide that, how do we efficiently and appropriately operationalize it within our programming? A little bit of history, that, the kind of expounding on what Kim just said, this was the spring of 2013, I presented to the board, and we felt that implementing the A M resource period would best support our students who are academically struggling at the time. We studied different iterations of programs like this at different schools, nationally also, and we implemented it. And we kept looking back at our data like we normally do, and we keep asking the question, is this the best use of our time? Because we made a significant, you know, we put a significant amount of time, a half an hour a day, to this. And so we found out that it wasn't. And so we took a continuous improvement approach into it and tried to incrementally, you know, improve it. What are some of the issues? What could we do to make this better? And we found, after, after a time, we found there was no overall lasting impact on the grades. It was evidenced by no real consistent improvement of students with no classes at the D-plus or lower level, even with the supportive resource period in place. We did find some value in it, and we had teachers that were using this time flexibly to work with and access students and provide not only academic interventions that it was planned for, but also enrichment opportunities like study groups and A C T practice and some club meetings. So, but in totality, being at the beginning of the day and not all the students are in school was deemed not to be the best use of our instructional time. So we had a scheduling team that began working in earnest in 2017, 18, 18, 19, and had, had some, some, some proposals to start to bring out, and then COVID hit. And, and so with that, Kim already mentioned that, you know, the school year, to mitigate the risk of all the students that were in the school at the beginning of the year, we didn't make resource period mandatory for anyone, and we started at, at 7:50. Some details around tonight's discussion include, the high school school day has been 7:15 to 2:35 for many years. We just didn't make resource period mandatory for everyone. To meet the instructional minutes as mandated by D P I, we have, we have to have an average of seven hours and five minutes of daily instructional time. So this would create, I acknowledge that not all of our students are used to be in school at 7:50, but, but some are, and...
Do you have a sense for what is the percentage there? I mean, are we talking 20%?
Yeah, it fluctuated, Joe, about...
Just kind of a range might be helpful.
You know, as timing of the year, and, and so, but it was roughly, I would say, it was mentioned by somebody accurately earlier that we had all of our freshmen in, and we used that for our transitional resource period for the first six or 12 weeks, depending on the year. And I would say with the academic resource period, that side of it generally would have somewhere between 25 and 40%, maybe, 20 and 30% of the students here. But kids could also choose to come in and ask their teachers to come in. So any given day, there could have been, you know, a number of students, but, you know, I would guess, you know, 50% of the students were starting at 7:50.
7:15.
No, 7:50, 50% were starting.
Yep, and so, you know, to, you know, this would create the following options for, for a high school instructional day if we no longer had the resource period back at the beginning of the day. With the minutes...
Next slide.
With the minutes, we could, we could go 7:30 to 2:35 as an option. 2:35 has always been a parameter of our school day, and it's contingent upon the current busing schedule at a cost. We could add additional buses so we're not tied to that time and have examples of school days, 7:50 to 2:55, 8:05 to 3:10. So there are a variety of different things that, that we could start to explore. But as I mentioned, this discussion is not solely around our starting or ending times. It's about how we can best maximize the impact of our daily instructional time with kids. Slide two? Nope, you're right. You're good. Go back. Thank you. One option is to retribute that 30 minutes from the resource period into the school day, basically adding about four minutes to each of the classes. But we are very interested in creating an advisory period, five days per week during our school day, that would allow time and opportunity for academic and social-emotional and operational, which I'll show you on the last slide, supports and enrichment. It's all aimed at increasing student achievement and positive engagement within our school. It's a variety of uses. It's not a daily S E L lesson, and I'll strive to talk about how we would, could use that time. There's a lot of research and reasons why we might want to add an advisory at the high school, and I'll just, I'll cite a few of those. In a groundbreaking book called Visible Learning, Professor John Hattie set out to identify which strategies and innovations have the greatest impact on student achievement, synthesizing over 50,000 educational research studies. He ranked these from largest effect to smallest effect, and among the top interventions in the findings was facilitating improved teacher-student relationships yielded almost two years of academic or academic achievement and achievement growth over one year, so doubled it. And this is really increasing the amount of trusted adults in the student's schedule during the school day. And I think you have seen a lot of the social media things around our sources of strength, and trusted adults was one of the campaigns that we use. So, so having adults that students can work with and have, have relationships with does increase student achievement. Aside from the academic intervention piece, an advisory period would create time and space for social-emotional learning activities that address CASLs, that's the collaborative for academic, social, and emotional learning, their five core competencies, which have been proven to increase student academic performance by 11 percentile points compared to students who do not receive any instruction in such S E L programs. And there's additional research from CASL shows that students participating in evidence-based S E L programs also showed improved classroom behavior and increased ability to manage stress and depression, and had better attitudes about themselves, their classmates, and the school. The middle school and the elementary schools, they have time built into their schedules to address these objectives during their school day. And, you know, each time, as Ms. Mizik talked about, the high school wants to do a community circle. When we want to do an academic and career planning day, if we want to facilitate a class, a counselor visit to the classroom or a grade level meeting, or do a safety drill, we have to take away from academic time in our classrooms and create, and disrupt our typical daily bell schedule. And so it's not unusual for a high school to have an advisory period, whatever they call it and name it, to deliver academic, social-emotional, and also kind of just operational supports to what you need to do within a school. So an advisory period would allow the high school the time and the space again to create and implement the systematic approach to support student academics and enrich student experience through activities and experiences that would foster, our goals would be resiliency, engagement, and social-emotional wellness. Next slide. To better explain this, because it has been a, it's been mentioned many times tonight, as you listen to this, I think everyone understands academic interventions, but the acronym S E L and its ability to help a school attain the clear research gains in student achievement still might need a little bit of explaining. So when we think about what it means to promote S E L for students, we recognize really three ways that S E L can be implemented in a school. It's not a one-size-fits-all approach. This three-legged stool graphic from CASL highlights how all three of these areas are essential to building S E L skills and supports for our students. Each of these legs has a specific role to play in ensuring that students both acquire and apply social and emotional learning competencies. The first one, one of the legs, is creating a supportive classroom and school environment that's essential to foster these skills and make sure students feel heard, seen, and respected. Examples at G H S include restorative practices, community circles, sources of strength for that leg of the stool. The other leg of the school, S E L isn't a one-hour, just a one-hour curriculum. It's also how the skills we teach students are used and integrated throughout the instruction that students see each day in every class. Examples at G H S and how we've been implementing this is we learned about and we try to model the three signature S E L practices that should be present in every lesson. Teachers, the three things are a welcoming ritual. It's where a teacher would establish a safe, inclusive classroom and frame out that day's learning objectives. Engaging teaching practices with a sense of, with a focus on sense-making and providing clear task and learning communication for all the students, with a good dose of executive functioning, how to be a good student in my classroom and, and how to achieve. And then each class has an optimistic closure. These are reflections on the day's learning and helping students look for connections for the future learning. So the three signature S E L practices are something that sometimes are just kind of intuitive for teachers, but it's also a model to be, to be taught. And, and I think we're seeing more and more of that when we're in the classrooms. So trying to answer, you know, the teachers are trying to answer the so what kind of of each lesson and are fostering a feeling of being connected, students can be connected to what they are learning, and they can see themselves in their lives in what they're learning. And so that's one of the ways that the high school is, is addressing the other leg of the stool. And then the last one, the third leg is explicit instruction, and that's, it's pretty straightforward. These are tier-two interventions that come from evidence-based, that will come from an evidence-based curriculum, but also can be skills that are explicitly taught in the moment. For example, so it's kind of going on to the, it's not a one-size-fits-all approach. If a student's showing that he or she needs help to gain and to learn and to use positive academic behaviors, you know, we'll always first assume that each student is trying his or her best, but when it's obviously not working, we have the ability to give explicit instruction on how to communicate with teachers, how to advocate for help, how to meet deadlines and all of those behaviors that, that make a student successful, and we can do that during this time. So another use of, of the time in an advisory would be to have people services working with students and, and teaching some of these explicit skills that will help them be more successful. Next page, or next slide, please. Kim, Ms. Mizik snuck this one in on me, but really it says that, that the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, which we give, indicated the 40 to 60% of the students experience some level of anxiety or depression. Are you, can you support a dedicated time to provide these supports to students? And so it's really with, with the 600 responses there, I believe this is a student-only portion of the...
No, there was, this was students and families. It's about 60, 40 students, parents.
40 on, yes, I could support this within, within the school day. And last slide. So some of the things that we could do within, within this time, it's not a five-day-a-week S E L curriculum, as has been mentioned. It's a variety of different things can go in, go into that. Enrichment activities, intervention activities, the skill-based tier-two support groups that I talked about, there can, yes, the social-emotional curriculum during that time, but also a lot of other things that, that help make a school go. And there are, and some of the examples are, are in that chart right there. So it would allow the high school a way to have a systematic approach to support academics, but also to enrich our students' experience, and hopefully that'll foster resiliency, engagement, and also more social-emotional wellness. And so that is some discussion on the advisory and then what we, and what we're basing that, some of our information on.
I think one of the points of confusion was that it's social-emotional learning equals early start time, and that is not the case. What we were looking was to recapture an ineffective instructional strategy that the data was telling us, the evidence was not supporting it being an effective use of instructional time. Paris is nodding her head that it's not useful. And so we were trying to figure out how to reallocate that time. We know part of the reason that we have the buses drop off at the high school at 7:10 in the morning is for, from a cost perspective, stacking the buses so that the same bus transports the middle school, the high school, and the elementary school is the most efficient way to bus. So given the number of hours required, instructional hours required by the state and the efficiency of busing, Mr. Lotus has always worked within the parameters that in order to use the same buses, my school day has to end by 2:35 so the buses can get to the middle school by 3:00 and get to the elementary school by 3:30. We don't have to do that. So one thing we can do is start the school day at 7:30 and stay within that stacked busing schedule, no cost changes. We could begin the school day at 7:50 and end the school day at 2:55. If we were to do that, we would need to run a second set of buses concurrent to the middle school start and end times. And Mr. Mitchell ran some numbers on what that added cost would be, and it would cost an extra $125,000 annually to transport high school kids at the same time that we're transporting middle school kids. So we would have an option to start the school day at the high school at the same time or within five minutes of the middle school start time and do it that way. Mr. Lotus also mentioned going past 8 o'clock, but that would bring the high school to start and end between the middle school and the elementary school and would make some adjustments to that school day, and the high school could go 8:10 to 3:15, somewhere in that range. So we have not decided what the school day would be. Board Policy 322 says that the school day, it's the responsibility of administration to ensure that we have enough hours of instruction based on the calendar that the board approves to ensure that we meet the minimum D P I required hours. One of the things that we're seeking feedback on is, do we reallocate that 30-minute time to four minutes per class period? Do we consider some dedicated, consistent scheduled time to do S E L activities? That's one aspect that we're looking for some feedback on before I send Mr. Lotus and the high school team back to really design the schedule for next year. And the second piece is, does the board want us to make adjustments to the school start time at the high school that would result in an increased cost? So when we bring you a budget, because that is an area that you vote, do you want us to bring you a budget with increased transportation costs to accommodate a 7:50 start time?
And just as a clarification, what I think I heard, Kim, is one of the alternatives was a 7:30 start date?
Correct.
Because one of the comments that was shared earlier during the public was a 7:15 start date. So can you clarify, are we looking at 7:15 or are we looking at 7:30?
So in terms of instructional hours, 7:15 was dictated because we only had resource four days a week. And so with start time consistently five days a week, we would have sufficient number of hours between the start and the end of the school day if we started at 7:30 and ended the school day at 2:35. The buses would be slightly earlier. It would drop students off 10 to 15 minutes before school started, but the start of the school day could be 7:30 and meet the instructional hours. So...
So that's important as we have the conversation?
Yeah. Before there's discussion about those questions, I just wanted to reiterate, the plan for social-emotional learning, I think, is extremely important, and it's actually making me very excited that this has been a choice and an option. I've been in A C P for three years now, and it's almost coming to the point where I resent it because I know what we're going to be doing every single time, and that most likely relates to career planning or college planning. And I know that there is so much more to life than just simply education, and we are in an educational institution, but what comes with education is also things outside of what you simply learn from books, and that includes what you guys were all mentioning throughout the program that's hopefully going to be implemented in our school. So, yeah, thank you.
That's very pertinent to this conversation, so thank you for sharing that, that perspective.
I have a question about the start time, too. So if the high school always started at 7:15, then were you, were you within the D P I's minutes even though 50% of the students weren't showing up at 7:15? Well...
We never, yeah, I mean, we've never had to change anything. That's been our submitted minutes for, since 2014.
So, so then why would we have to change now to meet D P I?
We, what we think is important to change is that we eliminate the resource period. Can you go back three slides, four slides?
So it's not necessarily tied to D P I min, I mean, that, you have to keep that in mind, obviously, when you're in the school day.
We need to keep, we need to keep, we need to have a school day that is seven hours and five minutes, based on the calendar that you, that the board approved in November for the 21-22 school year. We need to have, there's 175 instructional days. We need to have a school day that lasts seven hours and five minutes.
So in 19, in 1920, when it started at 7:15 and only 50% of the people came for resource hour, were you still meeting the D P I guidelines for instructional time?
Yes, based on the instructional expectation that students are attending, starting at 7:15.
But Mr. Lotus just said about 50% of the students didn't attend at 7:15. So they weren't all marked absent, were they? So they weren't all marked absent, were they?
I mean, I think that that's part of why the resource wasn't working is because it wasn't meeting the instructional needs of all of the students in the school, and that's why we're looking at making the change.
Well, was it needs or minutes? I mean, 'cause those are two different things.
We need to have a certain number of instructional minutes. We were counting the resource time with about, with less than fifty percent of the students in attendance as part of those hours of instruction. And so we were meeting DPI. As we look at instructional hours, and we've been considering waivers, and we've been looking at the impact of instruction, and we've had, um, parents concerned that their kids are not getting enough instruction and that they're, they need some more support, we need to make some changes because the, what we have been doing has not been impacting. So the resource has had, not had the impact on student grades, on student outcomes, on student achievement that we think it should have to devote thirty minutes of instruction daily to it. And so the high school has come to us and said, "Look, we're looking at the data, and we thought this was gonna work, and we made some changes to try and make it work, but it's not working. It's not having the desired impact, and we're not maximizing our instructional minutes, so we need to make a change to the structure of our school day to increase the academic results that our students are getting from their instruction." So that is, that is what the high school team has brought forward. If that is, if we want to continue an ineffective practice because we're concerned about fifty percent of the students, we can do it in one of two ways. We can either shift the school day and invest more money in the budget to be able to transport students at a later time so that we can, um, honor the seven-fifty start time that we've built, uh, that we've created an, a customness to over the last six or seven years. Um, or we can, um, adjust the time to seven-thirty. The bottom line is, the recommendation is to reallocate the resource minutes because that use of time has not been as effective as it needs to be. When the school start time is, is also something that we can adjust and make changes to. We have a choice of seven-thirty to two-thirty-five, and that would be within the existing budget that Jonathan has presented as a balanced budget. We could make the school start time seven-fifty and end the school day at two-fifty-five and set a school schedule that accommodates instructional minutes for students, and that would add, we would need to bring forward a budget that added a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars annually in transportation costs. Or we could consider some later start time, um, after eight o'clock that would, um, shift the high school start time behind the middle school. I know that they've looked at surrounding districts, um, a lot of our benchmark districts, their start time is seven-twenty. Um, so if you look at Muskego, New Berlin, Franklin, Peewaqui, we're looking at seven-twenty to seven-thirty start times.
Thank you, I appreciate that clarification. Did, um, so in an old-fashioned term for this, I mean, resource period is very common in high school schedules. Um, it, you know, when you, that other slide was very helpful, so it's not just SEL, um, it's all kinds of things. You know, people may have, you know, an old-school term for it would be homeroom, when you were to be, you know-
That's what I thought, really.
When you're, yeah, there's just a, a time to sort of, um, does it have to be in the beginning of the school day? Are you sort of locked into that timeframe from your master schedule standpoint?
I mean, I think we would let administration determine where that advisory period shows up. I think the question that we're trying to discuss is, are we comfortable with a seven-thirty start times and then we would not have to make any changes to the transportation budget? Or do we look at that and say, "You know what, let's stay with a seven-fifty start time and, um, add the additional cost to the budget"?
What would have to come off the table to acquire that a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars? Because we're obviously not necessarily getting an additional a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand.
So where are we looking to cut something if this has to go back up?
I don't know if you've looked at that.
We haven't looked at it. We would have to go into the budget and consider where to reallocate resources.
Another option, which probably doesn't make any sense, who else messes up everything else, is modify all this budget.
I was gonna say the same thing.
But then you run the extra trigger, problem about that, but I think probably-
The youngest kids first, and then the middle school, and then the-
You did have an elementary parent say that you couldn't get a delay this way.
Nobody wants to start a day.
And also because initially they're forgetting to work, it's, you know, related to those other areas. So I think you're, I mean, there's only so much room to wiggle. I'm trying to think back, and, uh, rocking my wife on the way over here, she remembers her start time was seven-oh-ee. Uh, I do not remember what my start time was, um, but, uh, I don't think it was an odd number like that, but I'm sure it was early.
You were starting twenty-five to two-fifty.
We have time to serve, to do one more, just very simple, like, what's the-
I'm wondering if the survey was a mistake that caused confusion, and I'm not sure that, I mean, you heard a parent say, "I wanna start earlier," said no student ever. Um, they're not gonna want early start time to question, but, um, students are going to pick the option that, but you as a board are responsible for, um, fiscal responsibility of extra dollars, and so, um, you could assume the later the better for all high school students?
Mm-hmm.
I, I, I guess I've heard a concern around a seven-fifteen start time.
Seven-thirty seems to be-
Compromise.
A compromise, and, you know, my oldest son started at seven-twenty because he was here before the resource period was introduced back in, I think, twenty-fourteen. So, you know, it wasn't that long ago where some of these students' older siblings started at seven-twenty, and now we're saying, "Let's start at seven-thirty." That doesn't seem out of line for me. Um, and so that, we would then stay with the current transportation budget, and then we would let administration look to see where does this advisory period fit in? Does it start the beginning of the day, does it start somewhere else? Um, but, but that's my thoughts. I want everyone else to kind of weigh in on, on things.
Well, Kim, as we, we spoke earlier today, I don't know if that's from edutimes, um, they, when we were talking earlier today, um, some of the, the, um, not that we plan everything around our sporting events and so forth, but the way sporting events is placed, if we put it much later in the day that there ends up having a lot of students missing a portion of their day of academics, correct?
Bus times four, I thought it was, I said four.
You do start running into practices, maybe game time started earlier, bar proving anything. So that is, that is a concern, um, with, with moving it to like a day-o'clock start time, I think, earlier.
One of the other, well, you can finish this quick comment before I go to the next one. My one comment, uh, a question I have is just, we know that the research period didn't kind of meet our expectations, so we're switching to the advisory period. And I'm assuming you have some very specific expectations. There were some different things that you let out, like three different areas, resilience, engagement, and social emotional wellness. You know, so I'm assuming we'll be looking at data to kind of help. Are we, are, are we doing something that is having an impact? Like the system's called a different name, we, you know, shuffling around. And I, I like, I like the fact that we are looking to do this improvement and not afraid to kind of call it out, if it's not impacting the students, you know? Why waste anyone's time on something that's not having an impact? So, not to say it wasn't a waste, but considering our tangential benefits, but it wasn't hitting, you know, the focus of what we were looking at, uh, resource period to do. So that was rather kind of common question on this. Has something to do with seven-thirty versus seven-fifteen versus seven-fifty, but it's all to do with, you know, we're gonna reshuffle this and redesign this, and then how does it become an opportunity that really can lead and have a way to make sure we're taking impact sort of that we need to see?
I mean, our option is three to four minutes per class period, extra, three days per week adding in an advisory, five days per week adding in an advisory or no advisory and just adjusting the schedule other times we have a school-wide activity that needs to happen. So that, that is, um-
And that's what was happening, it sounds like, right? You were starting at seven-fifty and then everything, so.
And we were captured, we were taking time, we were scaling the nights to do some of the other-
And there was a fire drill, it happened during someone's class, class time. And there was a recognition of lack of honor, it happened during the other day, it was about someone's-
Right, class time. It's not like we're trying to do less and less, you know, it, it's always more and more, and there's like, obviously, there are new challenges in front of us, which was happening over the last two and a half, and, uh, I would like, Thor was just about on top of the comment, but it was, uh, you know, the, the first resource period, it was academic resource period for the more part. And so, yes, he gets a benefit of relationships of working with the student, but it wasn't specific targeted, you know, it was, it was academic, um, and, uh, and to sort of add, to add, um, the social, uh, emotional learning piece and some of the other, um, you know, even, so Paris doesn't sound like she's a huge fan of ACP, but I think, we think we could be doing better and, uh, and, and not repeating things. Um, so I just think there's so much, there's a whole other half, there's a whole other side to how we could use that time, um, if it's in our schedule than what that old resource period was. So if we leave a mix of academics and wellness.
And one of the other things that really came out clear in all the surveys before was the need for consistency of schedule for kids, for families, for staff. It was consistently said, uh-huh, consistently. Um, but, so I think this would also bring that consistency to every one of that predictability is so important for kids, especially when, like, right now, it's really unpredictable.
I think I was just thinking about the thing that we talked about there from our character development standpoint. I mean, that's the center of our green bill attributes. And ultimately, a lot of persons look at and talk about character, talk about, you know, like, performance, character, talk about, you know, plus the character, talk about, you know, character. Maybe the thing that I found highlighted here, you know, and we've got, we've seen, intellectual character here, um, important or small, you know, all those components are kind of tied into these things we've talked about here. And there's been a lot of conversations around, you know, increasing, some belonging, some of the things, social strength. Um, and programs like Design Your Life, we talked about in the past, obviously, that nature that can stay in the resource, the advisory period, um, so we're kind of making a lot of the connection at that level.
Can I hear you say, Mr. Lotus, that they do have a resource at the middle school?
Yeah.
There's a letter, it starts again.
So, you know, for example, if, if John, if Mr. Weiss over there wants to put in, you know, any type of programming, he has that spot during the day that's not a happy, not for classes.
He also has a Friday, uh, extended, letters of block on Friday, so if he wants to.
And, uh, just one more thing about this, is it something new? Um, and I have a lot of parents, um, just that there'd be a lot of communication about what, what type of SEL curriculum or activities that you can leave so that parents are aware and have some input on that, because I think there's some anxiety about that that we had expressed during public comments, so.
It's a good point. I think what might be helpful is, as a couple of the advisory periods, to share that grid, to say-
That grid is very helpful.
Yeah, exactly. This is, this, that will serve as a communication tool to say, "This is what the advisory period is intended to do." Cause you're right, I think, I think you focus on SEL, what's the SEL curriculum, what are you stretching, and that type of work, and really that's a component from everything else that's happening during this period.
So our next steps with this, and I'm still not clear, I heard a couple people say bring me a budget with value increasing for transportation, and I, but, does anyone want us to put, to bring you a budget with increased transportation costs to start the school day at seven-fifty?
I, I mean, it might be worth at least looking at, right, just as an option. Since we have the summer, you know, we don't have to make the decision today, right? We have to August, go through the budget.
We're approving the budget at three-seven.
Oh, whoops, okay.
Right?
Uh, it, it wouldn't be too much work, I would be interested in seeing it, but I don't know, that's the sentiment of the rest of the board, but.
So we know it's about a hundred-and-fifty thousand, a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand.
A hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, and no cost.
I mean, does it, does it make these buses as COVID buses and use as a fund?
[laughing] Sustainability, budget number principle number seven.
Right, that's a one-time cost, so, I mean, you get back to the question. So I, I mean, we know the budget impacts, so are we asking, do we want administration to come back and find a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars worth of costs that would be used to offset that? Or, and trying to understand what we're looking for?
Well, I think that, that will make it concrete, right? If we say, "Oh, sure, we can start at seven-fifty, but there'll be no more such and such." Then I think once, once that goes on the table, it makes it easier to say, "No, we can't cut that. We, we've gotta start at seven-thirty," you know? Cause starting at seven-fifty means we have to cut this from the budget. And we don't really know what that is unless you take a look at it.
I'm normally scared for the budget when I know it's gonna hurt someone. So, I mean, to me, to look at it, for me to look at it, I mean, thinking about that, you know, my, I would be obviously a seven-thirty start time. I mean, some of that, I mean, I'm scared of the same today, but I have it at my age, pushing for, you know, you, or, or you, um, and I just don't care. So, you know, I don't think I would expect it all, I don't need to see that it's gonna cost me, it's gonna cost some, from somewhere. I just prefer it's on the budget, so, thanks for that.
I think a seven-three is a, is a compromise, I guess, you know? I like to look at-
Perhaps, perhaps what you do is go at, with a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars, that looks like, you know, two classroom teachers, or that looks like, you know, kind of, kind of give it a perspective. So what is a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars fund? It funds, you know, two classroom teachers, it funds one psychologist, it's, you know, to kind of get a, rather than identifying, "If we do this, this is what we're gonna have to cut." But saying, you know, a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars to invest in these types of things.
And I think it becomes a, well, my concern is it becomes almost a problem, it's almost, I'm on the last question, basically pitted two things against each other, right? Like, do you want SEL or do you not wanna start, you know, it's like, well, yeah.
That was, that, that was a false, false choice.
And that was, it's like, well, that's not, that's not really what the question was asking necessarily, but that's what they interpret to what they, their perception of reality, and so, you know? So are we, by putting this forward as an exercise, you know?
Are we creating this?
Yeah, are we creating this like, "Oh, you either have a band next year, you can start it," so it's like, yeah.
How many high schools take the bus? Are, are there a lot of high schools?
Well, it's only a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand because we could get away with three buses as opposed to the five that we need typically, so we would only have to stack an additional three. So Jonathan has counts based on who registered for the bus this year and audits that happen monthly about two days.
Is there, I mean, the, the only thing I could see is any alternative, I'm not gonna say a code, the seven-thirty start time. Um, yeah, as you said, I think most of the districts, if not every district, starts before seven-thirty, I'm getting unfamiliar with. Um, and so that would actually be one of the latest districts starting in this-
There are two districts that start later than us, um, that would start later, but the latest start time is seven-fifty-five. Um, West Dallas, West Milwaukee starts their, um, high school at seven-forty-seven, and Elm Brook starts their high schools at seven-fifty-five. And, um, I'm sure we might start later as well, but it's tough to tell because COVID, they've had an online presence, so their, their school start times and end times are off. Um, but the Elm Brook starts at seven-fifty-five and ends at three-one-nine, but their middle school starts at seven-oh-five.
Okay, so they have a bad picture, so it starts much earlier than, okay. So that's how they structure it, then you can worry about anything else. The only way that it really makes sense, I don't think a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars makes sense, would be to reshuffle all of our schedules, and to me, that's-
Well, there is some educational research, I'm sure the educators in the room have read, that say that the, the, the high schools should be starting later, cause they're-
Yeah, the CDC, the CDC studies say after eight-thirty, and in the United States, about two percent of schools start after, high schools start after eight-thirty, so that is not the common practice, even though that is-
The research says, yeah.
The research says, yeah. So I'm gonna move this along. Um, there are three things that we need to do for our next steps in the decision. Um, Green Hill High School staff will reflect on the input from student staff and families to consider changes to the school day and the school schedule beginning for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. We will evaluate, um, the cost impact and then we need some information on that when we follow up at the, uh, during the SEL report on June seventh. The safety team will continue to monitor CDC, DHS, and the Health Department credits and make changes based on those updated recommendations airing on the side of if we're close on mask, or masks optional. And then our recovery team at the elementary and secondary level will need to- And then, a recovery team at the elementary and secondary level will need to plan for instructional strategies and proactive measures to support student healthy recovery and processing of the pandemic impact with academic supports, with lesser funds being used to support that. So, those are our next steps as we look through the 21-22 school year, and we will communicate those. We will communicate additional information to families in the coming weeks.
If I could just comment, I, I do appreciate that we've had parents' involvement and in the open session tonight, as well as people reaching out to us. I think it's really important that all members of the community go to the source when they have questions, because I believe there was a lot of misinformation that got people a little bit more hyped up than what needed to be, and there were assumptions that were being made. So, I do appreciate the in-depth discussion tonight, which is what we just did.
I think, I want to, now, Steve, and I know you...
So, in terms of people who have to stay up late and then get up early, Mr. Lotus will be the first one, like, tomorrow morning at 6:00 AM, even though the school start time is not until 7:50.
My, my choice.
What I would say is, I know you both have personally followed up with many parents and family members, asking what's happening and seeing this on social media. So, thank you for, for reacting and responding to a lot of that.
I mean, it just goes to show that our community does try to stop on the education, and I, I think, you know, the discussion and thinking, Steve for being here, so like, can I see to share some of the in-depth, you know, what, what's remaining, what I'm agreeing with, the nuts and bolts of what this all means, so thank you so much.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
All right. Recognizing the best time, typically we talk about board member, professional development, founder review, committee reports, legislative updates. Anything that is present that needs to be discussed or shared tonight, if there are those left for agenda items?
The legislative update will probably be updated by the time that I, I, it gets to both of the, the pages. It was up there, I'm sure you...
Thank you.
Got a good take on it.
Do you need a motion to strike those, or...
I, I'm taking them now, just to see if there's anything that anyone wants to share about that, otherwise...
I, I listened to the Wasby seminar on handling public comments, the points, which I, is very helpful.
And that actually was a repeat from October of 2019, so it was, it was nice to structure to see that we are giving our public the opportunity to have citizen comments because some districts do not do that. And so, it was a kind of reaffirming.
Yeah, and school boards aren't obligated. I was surprised to hear that, that school boards aren't obligated to have a public comment session, so I'm glad that we have one.
And we actually have to, and like I said earlier, and Kathy, something that you shared with me a couple years ago, is that these are board meetings held in public. So, it's glad the purpose of these, and you put your right, we do want to hear from the community, we want to hear from families and things.
The hardest part about that, because we are on the topic, is, you know, I want the public to know that we can't always respond at that moment because it's not necessarily a posted item. And sometimes it feels really challenging, you know, the board member to sit here and not be able to, I mean, you can emphasize that people are listening and looking into their eyes as they say things, but it is hard when we sit up here and we can't always respond to everything.
And I think that was one of the reasons why I liked your suggestion, that we were able to, to speak to that, so I'm not sure if that's the marketing of the, of what it is. All righty.
A motion to adjourn?
Well, let me finish up. Yeah, so, any additional comments from visitors this evening? You know, Kim, I, I may have to say this, but...
I'm not going to make it very long. I just want to, I...
You're limited to one time.
Yeah, I know. What do you mean?
You're limited to one time beginning or end?
What do you mean, I can't, why can't I?
You spoke at the beginning of the meeting.
That's the policy.
That's the policy.
Okay, but I just wanted to comment on the start time for the high school, that I just wanted to make sure that you guys know that I think, I agree with the 7:30 start time, I think that would be beneficial, and that I hope that you guys do look into the fact of ending the mask mandate, because I just wanted to let you know that breaking news that both Whitefish Bay and Shorewood has ended their mask mandate, it's now going to be an optional thing, and while it's supposed to, we'll be voting tomorrow on there. So, I hope the board takes that into consideration for the summer school. If we don't, if we go to the end of there, that's fine.
Thank you.
Okay? So, take that into consideration and listen to what the parents are saying, because that's what we're here for.
Yeah, thank you, Kim. All right, so you know for the comments, we are adjourned, our next court meeting is on Monday through Sunday.